All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the June 15th meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. We do appear to have a quorum. However, we will do a verbal roll call and the clerk will call the rule.
Badri Lanquella.
Remember, you're gonna have to unmute yourself to s-
Aye.
Baltasar and Santana.
I don't see Baltasar on here.
Chris McHale.
Here.
Eric Sunquist.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Present.
Keith Furman. I thought I saw him before.
We didn't hear you, Keith.
I'm present, hello?
Yeah. Robert Burk.
Present.
Rebecca Campbell.
Here.
Robert Burke.
There I go. Sorry, I was prevented from, yeah, I'm present, thank you.
Tom Wilson.
Present. So, as usual, because we have one vacancy, our first alternate Margaret will be voting on all items. And until Baltasar joins us, Badri will as well. The first thing we'll do is have our usual IT pre-meeting presentation.
Hey, welcome to our virtual meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number on your original email. To members of cities, to members and city staff, members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Use your raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, panelists will be unmuted briefly, or I guess in this case you are unmuting yourself. Members of the public who have agreed, or who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain unmuted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up after speaking. The member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. So our first item of business is approval of minutes from May 4th. Is there motion to approve? Please unmute yourself to do so.
Move approval.
Well, to Furman, is there a second? Looks like seconded by Chris, just by the hand raise feature. So you just unmute yourself and do a voice, if you would. All right, any discussion?
Tom, just a heads up, we can't unmute ourselves, but Zoom, if you unmute us, Zoom still requires us to unmute ourselves after that. It's a new behavior. We aren't able to unmute ourselves without you doing it first.
Okay. All right, sounds good, thank you. I'm going to unmute all members then.
I just activated a feature where you should be able to unmute yourself without control, or without a host control. So you, as of right now, you should be able to, if anyone wants to test that.
We'll test it here, please unmute yourselves.
Yep.
Okay, raise hands for discussion. All right, seeing none. Go ahead, Eric.
No, that was, sorry, I'm just futzing around, my bad.
All right, all those in favor of approving last meeting's minutes, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. All right, that passes by a voice vote. Does anybody wish to register a no vote that I might not have heard? All right, seeing none. Moving on to item number one. Anne, are there any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
Myself, there is one registrant who has chosen number one with their registration. I'm not sure that's correct. I think it might be for number three. It's Kevin Yeska, did not want to speak but available to answer questions. If Kevin is available, he might want to confirm that he was here for item three, the zoning item.
That is correct. And this is Kevin. Yeah, that is correct, sorry about that. Please move me to number three.
Yeah, thank you. All right, then we will move on to item number two. Are there any disclosures, recuses, or communications for members of the board? Seeing none. We will move on to Legis star 60242, creating section 28.02200440 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 4728 Sheboygan Avenue, 11th Aldermanic District from PD GDP Plan Development, General Development Plan District to PD SIP Plan Development, Specific Implementation Plan District. And 60243, creating section 28.02200439 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at property located at 702 Gardner Road, 11th Aldermanic District from PD GDP Plan Development, General Development Plan District to PD SIP Plan Development, Specific Implementation Plan District. Okay. I believe our, who will be our presenter for this? Tom, is that gonna be you?
Oh. Are you asking?
We have a presentation for item number three.
We have people who are available to answer questions. Eric Halverson, Sean Malloy, and Tim Parks are here to answer questions. We do not have a presentation. We've had some discussions with, actually Eric, regarding this, and I believe that we also have members of the owner or the developer on hand to answer questions.
Okay, so assuming that board members have reviewed the materials that were presented, let's go to our public comments first, and then I'll open it up for questions from board members.
Okay, for this item, there are a number of people who would like to speak, as well as people who just are here available to answer questions. First is Sean Roberts, who would like to speak.
Hello.
Hi, Sean.
Hi. Yeah, and we did have a brief presentation, if that's appropriate. I had just emailed it over to that email, I'm not sure if I can check my screen, I wasn't even sure if that was needed. But I am with the development group, and I know, you know, the project, and we're happy to walk through that if time permits.
Well, each registrant is allowed three minutes, and that includes owners, developers. So do we have the? Do we have that available?
I did send, I forwarded you the presentation, Tom, but I also enabled sharing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you just, did you just do that? I've been out today.
I did just send that when I, when I, when I heard at the beginning that we should do that. We were not sure from my screen or not. I do not see that button.
Yeah, Tom or Anne, one of you two, if you have it available, you should share that. They do not have the ability.
Yeah, so Anne. Tim. Tim is able to do that.
Okay, so, understanding the three, the three-minute limit, that, that this was not necessarily crafted for that. So, you know, I am aware of city staff is both aware of the project, all the firms are in the project. But in the interest of time, I'm happy to jump kind of to the meat of what we're here to talk about, which was the Transportation Demand Management Plan that's been submitted, and the structure of my answer, and answer any questions. This, this presentation could be helpful for that, I think, if that-
So why don't you begin, and then at three minutes, if the board wishes to give you additional time, we can do that.
Okay. So Tim, if this is Tim Parks or wherever's driving, if you could just jump through this. You can go to the next slide. We can keep going, time doesn't really allow to get into all that. So just quickly, Madison Yards, for those that are not aware, it's a former site of the old DOT building. We completed the State Office Building and the parking structure two years ago now. And in 2018, we went through the rezoning process for General Development Plan. Part of that process included us working with the city's traffic and city planning and drafting TDMP plan that I know has been submitted over to you as part of our General Development Plan Approval. That was completed, and that subdivision in General Development Plan, creating six private blocks, really five development blocks around a private street network in Central Green, adjacent to the state project. I assume you're familiar with that site. Did you advance this time? So this, this is kind of the picture of what it is now. You see the new state building and parking structure, and then kind of the parking lot that remains, and then the demo site from where the old DOT building. As I mentioned, we started that private street network with the state project. We did add a new intersection on University and connected to what a north-south connector is called Gardner Road, and then the east-west vein connector is Madison Way. What you see here is what was completed and approved at the state project. And since that time, we have been working through the approval of the rezoning and the subdivision. And now we're back, and we have submitted two SIPs, which is the specific implementation plan for approvals of Block Three, which is that area next to the state building, right, right adjacent to it. And then Block Six, which is the private street networks in the Central Green. And we hope to be coming back for Block Two very soon. Whole Foods is our anchor for that, that was announced. And we're just going through a redesign of the other component of that block and hope to be back in front of the relevant parties yet this year. Okay? So, just a quick, very brief summary of how we got to where we were in the TDMP plan we submitted. We did work with our consultant, Kimberly Horn, and city staff. I know some of them are on today. Had several rounds of comments and incorporated our TDMP plan. That was submitted and approved at the general development. The key, the core value of that TDMP plan was really the goal of achieving a 30% non-motorized reduction, reduction in non-motorized trips to and from the site. That's, that's written in the plan, which I believe you have. And the TDMP plan really outlines the strategies for the potential mix of uses we're going to have here. And it really is meant to be a living document that allows us to adapt over time and really work in real time as we, as we sign up future tenants and understand what these blocks may be. Our GDP zoning gives us the ability to, flexibility to have varied height and uses. You know, we hope to have office, hope to have some medical, definitely some, some retail commercial, and then residential throughout the site. So the core of this document was, was to provide that framework that as we move forward, we will have something that can be adapted and serve as a, as a template and guide as we move forward.
Sean, just a formality here, quick. Members of the board, is there any objection to giving the speaker an additional two minutes? Please use the hand raise feature. Okay, Sean, please continue.
Okay. So with that extra two minutes, I will jump right into the, the next slide. So what we really wanted to highlight is, you know, that we believe this is unique, and I'm sure city staff can speak to that as well, because as I mentioned, we have these six private blocks. One of them is the Central Green and Streets. And the part of our approval is, is we will be creating an association, and we had declarations and covenants that have been drafted and reviewed by city staff, that's really going to create a management entity essentially for this private street and Central Green network. That entity will be responsible for things such as, you know, landscaping, snow removal, wide variety of things, capital improvements as needed. But, you know, also, one of their, their important tasks is to be the TDM coordinator, which is a unique feature, and that they are the ones who will implement the approved budget for this association. And they are the ones that will serve as that true single point of contact, as is outlined in the plan. I don't have the time right now to get through all of the bullet points in the plan. But that single point of contact is really the person that will be doing the annual surveys. We'll be reaching out to each tenant as they come online. We'll be the one to make sure new, whether they're office tenants or apartment residents, retail tenants, and even the state of Wisconsin, which even though they're technically on private GDP, they are fully integrated into Madison Yards. And we do have a good working relationship. So the, the core of this TDMP is to really create that framework, as I mentioned. And some of the specifics we're talking about as our initial goals and outreach points are written in the TDMP plan. But we have worked extensively to David City Staff. We believe we have a unique and frankly, one of the more developed, if not the most in these plans are getting more relevant and necessary for the approval process. But having worked through this with city staff over the past two years, we would like to advance and move forward with our first approvals, which are relatively limited, are what's put before the planning commission now, which we've heard us do, is the Block Three, which is just about a 200,000 unit apartment building with some first-floor commercial, which is about 10,000 square feet. That is one small block as we move forward, but this plan is going to be the living document I mentioned that we're serving, we're not only Block Three and Six, but the other blocks going forward. But we do have other members from our team, including Kimberly Horn, available and registered. But the intent tonight was to have me kind of start off, give, you know, give a quick overview, and then we are certainly here to answer any questions you have. And Tim, just quickly, you might want to just scan through a couple of the following images. So, again, as I mentioned, Block Three in yellow and green are what was before the planning commission. And then, you know, we, we have some other additional information on the Central Green, talking about our, these, this is part that's submitted to the planning commission. We do have a bike repair station. We have been in discussions long-term about planning for a B-cycle station. And then I'm happy to answer questions on where we are at the status of that, but it's not anticipated in the first phase. And then these are some, some images from Block Three that are before the planning commission, and I've already gone through. I know that was kind of a marathon summary, but that's, that's kind of the overview.
Tom, you're muted.
Yes, thank you. I, uh, thank you, Sean. All right, next registrant, if we have further that would like to speak. And do we have any others who would like to speak? Anne, you're still muted, there we go.
Okay, yes, let me, let me, the next registrant who would like to speak is Tracy Shandor.
And I'm just here for questions. I'm from Kimberly Horn, and so I don't know if I want to yield my time to Sean if there's anything more that Sean wants to talk about, if I'm able to do that.
Yeah, we certainly could, could do that. I just didn't realize there were somebody from the same group.
Yeah, sorry.
Could have combined them. So Sean, if you'd like to add some more points, other, I mean, members of the board can certainly ask questions, I'm sure they will.
Yeah, no, I, I did try to cover it as quickly as I can. And I'm not sure if, if everyone has an understanding of the project the way I certainly do in, in our team, and I know city staff does. I guess we would just say we are, we are happy to answer any questions and to get into more details about the, the history of us working closely with, you know, Eric and Sean and Yang, and more recently, Zia. And our Kimberly Horn team brought a lot of experience. Tracy is actually out of the Atlanta office, and we've still been working very closely on the transportation piece when we went through the master planning and development of the site. So we, we do believe what we have is a very strong framework and does have real metrics and measurement, and is, is that living document we really need, not having our tenants identified. We are fully committed to collaborating with the city and providing the feedback and tracking that we outline in the TDMP plan as drafted. And I, with that, I would just say we are able to answer any questions people have.
Thank you.
And I just want to say then there are other people registered, available to answer questions as well.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
No.
Okay. So then we go to questions from board members. Eric, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, full disclosure, multiple hats for me, just so everybody knows. I am on plan commission, so I did hear this a month or so ago. And was one of the people who pushed to refer it to us. And there were other, there was another concern about some sustainability issues that the applicant team was asked to think about and come back, but this was the main one. The, the project, I, the sense of the plan commission, and my own feeling, is that this is a good project. It's in a good location, it's well-served by transit. The best TDM is, is good location, and this is, is, you know, mixed use, it checks a lot of the boxes. There's always been concern, though, that this project would overload the capacity of the roadways in the area if it were explicit, you know, very auto-oriented. So from the time they got their GDP onward, there's been an expectation of reducing the amount of car travel to and from the site. And that's been expressed as 30%. I, I think the speaker is not correct in saying those metrics are well-defined, though. So let me get into a couple of reasons why the plan commission felt this plan was not yet ready. Let me ask, actually, since this is question time, before I, you know, I'll make some specific points and see if I can get a reaction. But have there been, have the, the development team, have you talked to staff? And have you changed anything since it was proposed in, in April? The, the document that is on Legis star is still dated March 4th. Is that, are we still status quo, or has something changed?
That, that is correct. We, we are still, as submitted, we did have a follow-up call with, with Zia and Eric and Sean, and looked through the plan, and, you know, agreed that we would come to this meeting today with the plan as submitted, based on our past history, and getting it to that draft, getting it to the status it was.
Okay. So I, I believe that there are three main issues here. And if I could just list them all three briefly, and then we can come back and talk about them one at a time and see what you guys think, and then we could maybe get a view from staff as well, and certainly other members of the committee. First is the goal. As you said, it's 30%, but it's not clear what 30% is, what the baseline is that we're going off of 30%. It talks about non-motorized. Does that really mean that you expect 30% of the people to walk or bike there? Or do you mean 30% fewer cars going there? Those are really different things, because if I get there on a bus, it's, it's still motorized, but it's not a car. And second, how, how often, how will that, depending on what the answer is, how will you know if you've met it? How often are you going to be counting cars, and how will you count them? Will you count them against? How, what, what is the 30% coming off of, of the occupancy of the site in order to make that comparison? And is it 30% less than the ITE expectation, or, you know? So there's a whole host of questions in this 30%, which is, you know, poorly stated, and is, and there's nothing really about how you're gonna count it. So I wonder if you can speak to that?
I can start with that, and then I would need to defer to city staff and Kimberly Horn, technically. You know, the 30% goal actually came from the city, as it's written in the commitment section on the first page of our TDMP. It is intended to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips to and from the site. As, as our plan states, the metrics we are doing is the, the annual survey, which we included a draft we received from the city and were asked to include. So, you know, I'm going to need to learn, to lean on city staff to weigh in, because it was really their guidance and frankly requirement on the front of this, that, that this is the core of our plan, and this is the metric that was in our GDP approval. So we've been working around this for, for over two years now. So I don't know if anyone from the city can weigh in on that, and then Tracy from Kimberly Horn is here to answer the technical, because I'm certainly not a traffic.
Mr. Chair.
Sean.
If you want staff to weigh in, or, or how you want to-
Yeah, let's, why don't we go to staff first?
Okay, I would ask you to unmute Sean Malloy and Zia.
All right.
And perhaps Dave Tarbridge.
And I have either unmuted them or asked them to unmute themselves.
Okay, why don't we start with Sean?
I, I can speak for Sean. Sorry about that, is that better?
Yes.
So we are looking for a reduction in single occupancy vehicles, non-motorized vehicles. And then we're looking to study that on an annual basis. So right now, the condition is that there will be a study, there'll be the methodology we'll include by traffic engineering prior to it being done, along with a survey that will be of all the people who operate that building. And that would be approved by us, traffic. And then that would be used to see what's working, what's not working, and then continue to adjust the TDMP accordingly. That makes sense?
Yeah, so it's not, 30% non-motorized is not correct. It's just 30% fewer cars. And is, and we had this conversation just the other day on East Wash, but is it, you're gonna, so you're gonna take the square footage of the, of the, of each use that's involved and look at the ITE manual? That's your baseline, and you want to be 30% under that? Is that the method?
Yep.
Okay, so all of that should be in this plan. I'm not scolding any particular person, but I mean, that needs to be in here.
I, I agree, and that's why we have a comment for the plan commission that requested them to continue to- I agree, and that's why we have a comment for the Plan Commission that requested them to continue to work with us.
Okay.
Those things to be ironed out, and we tried to lay out like the importance of having that study in there, in that comment. But that was our intent with that.
Okay, I mean, the, at a meta level, the, the document as presented by the developer, you know, it's sort of a plan to plan. It says the developer team is committed to creating a conference of improved TDMP. Well, this is the TDMP. So no, we're not committing to do it later. We need to do it now. So this is what some of the frustration is and some of this vagueness in the, in the writing, which is, is really unfortunate. So, so okay, now we know what the goal is. And I, I, maybe we can get to comments. I'd be interested to see what other Plan Commission members think about that as the goal. It has been in the GDP, so it's, but, and so maybe it is what it is for this project. But we're going to have other projects and we have development of TDM policy coming along, so this is of interest. As a template, it's of interest on future parts of the project here. And, you know, it's, if there were a better way to work it out that everybody liked, we could still change it in the SIP. So the fact that it's, you know, we, it may stay the same, but I'd be interested in people's comments. Okay, so that's the first of three. The second one is, in this case, there are subsequent parts of the project that are coming along. And staff has sort of explained the enforcement mechanism for this, is that the 30% target, which we just heard how it is, how it's supposed to, you know, be worked out, isn't met, then subsequent parts of the project would be delayed. But we hear that Whole Foods is coming along like in the next few months. So there won't be any data to, to, to go against for that. So I wonder if the development team has thought about, and, and at a bigger picture, we don't want to stop these projects. We want the density there. We want this project to go ahead. So I wonder if the development team has thought about a way to, as an insurance policy that isn't stopping you guys from the next parts of the project, but something else, you know, that you can commit to that would, you know, make us, you know, that would be, that would kick in as a plan B as opposed to we'll just kill the density on the later parts of the project.
And can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, no, I mean, honestly, we have not, because we believe, and we've been told by not only city staff, but even Kimley Horn, that, that our plan is, is one of the most comprehensive, and yes, it is a framework, but we talk about our performance metrics and how we will work with faith with the city. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what else we could do without knowing what these, these projects will be and doing what we're outlining in this plan. It is, it does list some pretty concrete steps and strategies that are, you know, not just created by us for this project, but have been implemented elsewhere and are kind of best practices. So I think, you know, what we are committing to do is to do our, our good faith effort and to implement the plan that we have submitted that is, in our understanding, more robust and more prescriptive from strategy standpoint than what currently exists in Madison. So I, I don't really have a response beyond that to say we have been working for a couple of years now with city staff and we fully intend to keep doing that and want this framework to provide us the ability to get the metrics and then to react in real time, but that's several years away. So I don't know how we, how we get to the data that's several years away if we're not able to move forward.
Well, so I just, your points about Madison's lack of firm policy and you guys kind of being a beta case and all this is totally true. So that's part of the, the issue here. Your assertion that this is a really robust plan though, it lists a bunch of things that you're going to consider doing, but there's not much of a commitment in here to do any particular thing. You gotta admit, it's all a plan to plan. So we don't have either a, an enforcement mechanism, for lack of better words, or, or anything that we can turn to if you don't meet the 30% or hard commitments that we will do a certain number of bus passes or we will fund something at a certain level. It's, it's a whole bunch of things that you're going to consider. So if you're the neighbor there who's worried about the roads getting congested, I'm not sure that's really, you know, gonna cut it. So I, are there things that you can commit to doing? That, you know, funding TDM at a certain dollar level if the 30% isn't reached? Or committing to unbundling and charging for parking, you know, something that we can go to?
And, and some of those things, not, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but that, that just triggered me. I mean, we, we've definitely, and, and, you know, I would encourage to, to kind of look at the points in the plan. We, we definitely, you know, for example, in Block 3, we committed that in all of our public meetings, the parking is unbundled, not have to rent a space, parking is separate from the residential use. That's, that being the first thing in front of, you know, the commission right now, it's that smaller scale apartment building. As far as, you know, funding, what trying to highlight with this is the unique structure that we do have this association that does have that unique structure that able to, you know, to work towards this and to do things like the survey and to be that TDM liaison and to be that simple point of contact. We do, we do believe that is a unique feature and a positive feature, and that sets us up for success. But without having, you know, I mentioned we do have Whole Foods as a signed lease. But without knowing the future tenants, the future, you know, scope of these blocks and the buildings themselves, it's very difficult to know how some of, how many units we're going to have at the end of the day versus how much office space, commercial space. We're trying to be flexible and use this framework for approvals on all the projects. And, you know, I'd ask for the city to, to do a better job helping me, help me do a better job explaining how we've kind of got to where we are. We recognize that this is different than if we were coming in with a fully cooked building that we say, okay, this project's scope is a 3,000 square feet of apartments, 100 apartment units and a restroom. We can't do that now, but it's a little harder for us to say we're going to do things. I can tell you, there is no, there is no funding for things like subsidizing bus passes. We don't have the employee. Certainly work with Whole Foods to make sure they, they have access to resources and encourage them to do things. Regional, you know, assets, you know, whether it's ZIA or everything else, to have that coordinator, which we are committing to fund. We have a single point of contact for each individual block. We are making commitments, like we've said in Block 3. We are decoupling with the parking, with the rent, you know, you do not have to have parking with the, with the rent. You can separately, you know, not rent a space if you do not need it, which we encourage. I know that may sound like it's a bit of a, I'm trying to just reinforce that. We really want a strong framework, and by nature, without knowing the end users, it's very hard for us to make concrete, specific commitments, because we want that flexibility. And the commitment we have today is the declaration of all forward in association with a manager role. That manager's role is responsible for TDMP implementation and is responsible for that single point of contact with the city.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes?
If you were to, if you were to get a little closer perhaps to your computer, you're coming
Oh, okay.
Quite muffled, and so I think it just would help everyone all the things that you were saying. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, sounds like it.
Much better.
Yeah, so sorry about that, just to calling in. So I, I guess in summary, I don't know if, if anyone from the city want to you know, piggyback off of that, but you know, I, I do not want the impression that we are, we are being aloof and non-committal, but we, we definitely want this strong framework and we want, we understand, because we had to do that with the GDP, that we have to work with city staff. And, you know, we believe that, you know, this board and the Planning Commission and others would, you know, make city staff, you know, traffic engineering and then ZIA, you know, hold us accountable for what we've committed to do and to work with us collaboratively as we go forward. We definitely want to move this project forward. And it has evolved substantially over the past couple of years, and it's currently evolving due to pandemic and other things. So it's going to be a somewhat of a moving target, and we believe the plan as written provides a lot of concrete examples, and we, you know, we'd like to work with the city to hone that further as we need to.
It looks, it looks like we have a staff member who'd like to, to speak. Eric, unless you wanted to go?
Well, I can finish up and then shut up and then the staff can talk, if that's.
Go ahead, go ahead, Eric.
I had a follow-up here, just on that specific point, like on what the commitment is. So, I mean, one of the, the, the framework is that there'll be a TMA and a TDM coordinator, both of which are good, like, don't get me wrong. But it's not really specified the level of effort involved in that. So is the TDM coordinator, that could be a property manager who now has a second title and, you know, you know, devotes a few hours a month to something like that. I mean, that's what we're wrestling with here. It's so vague in what the level of effort and, and commitment is going to be. So I, maybe we've gone through that enough and we can, I can shut up and see what other people think, but Mr. Roberts, any? Like what, what do you, is the TDM coordinator a full-time position? And are you going to be funding that at a certain dollar level? Or you, is there some, you know, more specificity that we could build in on that scale, on that front?
Yeah, the coordinator is not a full-time position. It's part of the scope. You know, and that scope over time and responsibility over time for the management association will definitely change. What before, for approval now is, as I said, you know, 200 apartment units if you ever take and, you know, 10,000 square feet of commercial space. That, that scope certainly should not require a ton of, you know, TDM management. There's tracking and there's, you know, there's, there's some metrics and surveys, et cetera, outreach. But that is not a full-time position, and even, you know, as this project advances, the TDMP management and outreach is, is a portion of what's a responsibility of the association. So that, that will evolve over time. But to answer your first part, we do not see that as a full-time position.
Yeah, so, okay, I, I mean, you've got, like you said, you've got a long list of bullet points in here. And to me, if I were the coordinator responsible for checking out the, you know, whether each of these might work and negotiating with B-Cycle and Metro and whoever else, that would be a lot, not just some, some outreach. So I think we're not on the same page yet, but now I will shut up and see what other people have to say.
Okay, so Eric Calverson, you had your hand up earlier, and I see that it's down now, but I may have hovered over it and lowered it. So I just want to make sure that you didn't want to.
I just, I just wanted to give a little bit of background from the staff perspective of how we, we got here, maybe a little bit of clarification. I was working with ZIA last week, trying to figure out how do we package what we've done and show it to people. And so I started kind of listing out what we are actually trying to do, and what we're trying to do is set up a TMA, get them to hire somebody, get them to do a report that has an engineering study and a survey, kind of get these key components. And the top of that title was TDMP in Madison. And I think what I realized is this is not a TDMP in Madison. This is more of how you get to the TDMP, and what this maybe should actually be called is something closer to traffic impact mitigation strategies in Madison. And highlighting what those strategies are is what they've done with us, which is setting up the legal structure to, to create the TMA, commit to hiring somebody, commit to doing the, the report and those studies. And then, you know, we've also had that comment to say to continue to work with staff. So at no point do I think that we've actually produced that TDMP that the coordinator will be looking at saying this is what we're going to do for year one. And I think some of the reasons that, that we did that is to allow that to be a conversation between, in this case, probably the NPO and ZIA and that coordinator for saying, okay, here's your site, you're on board. You kind of understand what this business is and what, what their intent is, what, what can we work on collaboratively to start getting at that 30% goal? And they would write that together. And, you know, some of the struggles also been, there are a few other groups out there that are kind of working on these things. And we had to make a choice of do we wait to figure what gets fleshed out from these different studies that are kind of working on similar things? Some are working on TDMs, some are working on parking, some are working on, you know, rapid transit, you know, all of those things that I think play into this. Or do we move forward with what we have now? And kind of what we have now was we wanted to make sure that we were able to continuing, continuing the conversation. So it always frustrated me as staff, prior to this, doing TDMPs and making sure that they put in hard, specific things that they're going to do, is there was never a way to really check back in and say, how's it going? Are those things that you committed to, that you picked, working? Are people taking advantage of those bus passes? Was it just, was it only at a level where the people who are using those passes would have taken the bus anyway? You know, it's stuff like that, that we wanted to be able to say, how do we do this conversation annually? And I, I do fully admit, it's, it's not perfect, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of some of those other committees and from this body. But I did feel it's important, especially with the development of this scale and some of the other ones we're seeing around the city, is we have to do something now. It's too important to just do nothing, even if it's imperfect, so.
Thank you, Eric. Go ahead, Tom.
Maybe I'll make an editorial comment, and I want Eric to correct my editorial comment if I, if I say. I think that we are having weekly meetings on the issue of TDM and TOD. And I feel like this is a, an area that has not been well-defined by the city. And there are excellent models out there that Eric, actually, and Eric's organization have been involved in. And so we would like to move in that direction. Actually, we'd like to move in that direction relatively soon, where there's more definition for the developer. And then perhaps easier accountability on behalf of the city side that's not labor-intensive. We're not there right now. You'll actually see a presentation at the July 6 meeting of steps that we're taking to get there. And I think that's, I just wanted to provide that as a background. Eric, would you agree with what I just stated?
Would.
Oh, I was thinking Eric Sunquist too, yeah.
Yeah, so we should loop in Eric Calverson, I think, it seems like to those.
Yeah, so maybe we should, I'll forward the invite to you, Eric.
All right, thank you, Tom. Our next board member, Chris McAhill, go ahead.
Thanks. So I had a lot of the same issues that just came up. The thing that jumps out when I first look at the plan is it's, it's kind of clear from the plan that this is like a joint effort of the city and the developer trying to figure this out together, because so much of the plan is sort of just existing conditions. There's transit, there's bike share, there's these things. So it's not really clear in any way what the developer would do, aside from a handful of things we've talked about, and how those things would add up to this 30% goal. And I think if this plan were serious about achieving that goal, we would see things in here that we know help achieve TDM, like reining in how much parking there is and having a plan for how that's going to work as the project develops. So that, that's just the thing that is glaring to me. But really, I guess my question is, so I, I did see this presented at Plan Commission, and a lot of these same issues were raised then. Including, regardless of, of, of folks trying to get, wrap their head around TDM, there were some basic inaccuracies and poor wording in the plan that were brought up at Plan Commission. So I was looking forward to it coming here to see where things had, had gone since then. And it seems it hasn't gone anywhere. So the idea that this plan is just going to sort of work itself out and be a living document, you know, we're not seeing that yet. And that, that concerns me. So I guess for staff or, or anyone, like, why are there no updates to the original plan and to, before bringing it to us today?
Who wants to take that one?
Okay, yeah, oh, I can, you know, I will say the March 4th one that we, we submitted with our SIP supplemental did include
did include updated comments that we made for Zia's latest iterations earlier, 2020. So we did make some tweaks and the, the comments, the formal comments we got from the planning commission meeting were that our plan was being forwarded to this board for discussion. So I, you know, when we talked, I mentioned earlier, we talked with city staff, we reviewed this. And, you know, I don't want to put words in Eric's mouth, he's, he's free to chime in as well. They, uh, you know, the intent was to try to explain how we got to this document. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly what inaccuracies I'm happy to address any of those. I, I do know that one of the B stations was removed from the mall. But outside of that, I'm not sure what else, uh, may, may not be accurate in here from how we had drafted it. Because there, there was a great deal of time and effort on our part and Kimley Horn's part and the city's part, drafting and redrafting and tweaking this to get to the GDP approval. And then we did go through one more round to update it for the SIP approval. So that's kind of the feedback I can give you on that. And I love city staff.
It looks like Tim Parks would like to speak. Go ahead, Tim. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes. Hello. Um, the Plan Commission referred this on May 11th. Uh, and the motion of the Plan Commission was to allow the applicant to work with staff to revise the TDMP to specify what the 30% non-motorized mode split means and understand what the enforcement mechanisms for the development will be if the trip reduction goals of the plan are not met. Uh, and also recommended that the TDMP be referred to this body, uh, for review and comment. Um, I think that leaves things relatively open ended, uh, for, uh, what the, the board wants to do tonight. Uh, I think it's pretty clear, uh, just in listening to the conversation and also discussing it with, uh, the project team and, and transportation staff over the recent weeks, that, uh, the 30% non-motorized mode split, uh, is perhaps not the correct language. Uh, but otherwise I think the Plan Commission is looking for the board, uh, to provide it some guidance about whether or not the, uh, the standards for plan developments will be met, whether or not the TDM, uh, will actually, uh, satisfy the standards for approval. The, the Plan Commission has to make a recommendation to the, the common council about the, uh, uh, the transportation impacts. So traffic, parking, uh, and the like, and determine whether or not the, the project is going to have an adverse impact. Uh, in fact, it's disproportionate to the facilities and improvements designed to meet those demands. That's quoting from the zoning code. Uh, so the plan development district shall not create traffic or parking demands disproportionate to the facilities and improvements designed to meet those demands. And the standard in particular, uh, points to TDM as a way to resolve those. So I think the board is being asked to help the Plan Commission determine whether or not that standard D is being met. And I think that, uh, working with the document that's part of the record now dated March 4th and providing specific direction to the Plan Commission, uh, how that plan should be shaped, what specific conditions the Plan Commission might recommend to the common council, uh, would probably be the, the right tone for the board to take, uh, this evening. And I'd be happy to answer additional questions as we go along.
Thank you, Tim. That was helpful. Uh, Chris, did you have follow up? Anything further?
Uh, yeah. I mean, we can go through and make lots of recommendations. I think Eric has expressed some, you know, I would recommend that it needs to be more clear about the things that, I, I mean, I would like to see more of the, the, the things related directly to this development, um, that would meet this mode share goal. Um, and, you know, like, given that there is transit and bike share and all these things, how far does, is this development have to go to, to hit that 30% goal? And what are the things specifically in this development that will do that? Um, so I guess I'll let other folks comment, but, um, I just, one of the things that came up at the Plan Commission meeting was, um, not also not to put words in Eric's mouth, but I think he said that this is a good project and it will, it will make its way through, through these hurdles, um, but we should address these things. And I, I hope that wasn't a license to, to just say it's going to, to make it through these hurdles and, and not much has to be done in the meantime.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Um, Dave Schrobridge, uh, did you all want to add something? I see your hand there.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out one thing that I think is important that we're sort of touching on, uh, with this 30% non-SOV mode split, um, specifically how to measure that and how to measure it accurately. I, I don't know if there's a common understanding on what would need to be done. I think Mr. Roberts had mentioned something about a survey, which I don't know if that means distributing email surveys to employees, asking them how they came to work. Uh, that level is one thing, but there's another level where you actually measure the trips that are coming in and out of the development. It's a little more extensive, but I can say it's, uh, much more accurate. And I think would give us a better sense for whether or not, you know, the things that we're doing with this, this Transportation Management Association or this TDM coordinator, uh, whatever you're committing to, whether it's, it's creating that desired effect, which is, is the 30%. So, um, just want to throw that out there as something to think about. How do we measure this and how do we create a program that, that gets at those numbers?
Thank you, Dave. Alder Foster, you're up next.
Thank you. Um, I apologize here. I know Eric clarified when we've been talking about this 30% number. I'm still not crystal clear on it. So is it simply saying that the single occupancy vehicle mode share cannot be, will not be greater than 70% for this area? Is that what the 30% non-motorized is supposed to be? Me, Eric or Sunquist, Eric?
Uh, Eric Calverson, maybe.
Yeah. So we'd be looking at the IT trip generation manual thing that, you know, for this use and this square footage, you get X number of trips. We're reducing, we're saying that the 30% reduction will be off that number. So if it was 100 trips, we're expecting 70. Does that make sense?
So this is a 30% reduc-, I didn't see the word reduction anywhere. So there's a 30% reduction off of the expected from the IT manual projections.
That's what we're looking at.
And, um, I don't, David Schrobridge, you might know what I'm talking about here, but I, I feel like it was maybe part of Madison in Motion, but there was some work done that showed kind of relative mode share across the city and where we, you know, where we had sort of, um, you know, highest non-SOV mode share and where maybe our greatest opportunities are. Does that sound familiar to you? And do you remember offhand at all what, kind of what this area of the city is right now in terms of mode share?
Uh, I don't have it offhand, but yes, we did look at different sort of districts in the city that would have, and, and looked at what the mode share is today. And from that, we were going to try to establish trip reduction goals over time, uh, based on, you know, the conditions that exist. For example, if this area has a lot of transit service, which it does, we would expect that we might have more success with a TDM program in this area as we would in American Center or somewhere, you know, further out. So that was the idea, but we didn't develop the specific goals. That was really just the first step in, you know, deciding where we might want to apply the goal.
I am, the 2050 regional plan that was published about two and a half years ago has, uh, the mode split for Madison, um, which is not area specific. But for Madison, it's, uh, 10% transit, uh, 6% biking and 10% walking. So relatively high walking percentage.
Well, I guess, you know, this might be an area to look into. Um, I, you know, the one that, that Dave and other staff had worked on, you know, was a, a more, I don't know if it was census tract or what it was, but it really did show, um, the differences within the city. And again, again, I think the thought was to think about what our opportunity is, um, that there are going to be places where we can really make a, a difference and places where we can't. Uh, this part of the city seems like one of those places where we think and thought and think we can make a big difference. And it feels like we should be understanding what the kind of baseline conditions are here. Uh, you know, I think about the apartments on Shabwaygan Avenue and there's already, I think, a pretty high transit utilization there. Um, you know, what are our existing conditions? And then I, I would hope that this TDM is really sort of pushing to, you know, improve on, on that. So it seems like somehow including that into this analysis would make sense. And, um, yeah, I guess I'm, that, that part still seems a little bit, um, fishy to me. Um, I disagree. Go ahead.
This is, this is Tracy Shandor from Kimley Horn, and, and we did the traffic study. And as part of the traffic study, we did pull the census data. Now, that traffic study was pulled and completed, um, several years ago at this point. Um, but I do believe I have the right information open and we could certainly look at it again. Um, but I do think the average for this area for car, um, I think this is journey to work data, um, was about 70%. So I would have to pull other, um, yeah, this is journey to work data because it has worked at home. Um, and I'm not sure exactly if this is the right census tracts because I just started digging through some files. But it looks like the existing around this area, um, is hovering around, uh, 69 to 70% from, I think this data is from 2013. So that is part of where the number came from. So as, so as part of the impact study that was conducted, we included a trip projection in that to see what the impact really would be of this area. Um, that's pretty standard protocol for how we do, uh, trip generation as part of that. We look at the census data and then, you know, use that mode split reduction. And so what we try to do with the TDMP is to make sure that, um, the site that we're building now continues to carry with, um, what the surrounding area has and is consistent with that. So in this area specifically, there is access to transit. And so that will help significantly, um, to allow people to choose the mode that best fits for them. So hopefully that helps to answer where, you know, maybe that 30% um, non-motor, or not, uh, sorry, excuse me, the 30% non-single occupancy vehicles come from.
Mr. Chair, could I re respond to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Dave here. I think it's important to point out the context of that census data, that journey to work data. That's for people who live in this area and who are working in other locations. And I know for a fact there are a lot of people that live in these census tracts that work in the university and don't have parking and have a free bus pass per se, and have the conditions available where 30% is very realistic and reasonable for somebody who lives here. So that, that 30% could be applied to residential property in this Madison Yards development, no problem. What I struggle with is employees for, as an, an office employee in Madison Yards or a hotel employee or a Whole Foods clerk, you know, do they have the same sort of trip making characteristics that a resident would in this area? So I just want to make sure that we understand that. I think we may want to treat different land uses differently depending on what their trip making characteristics could possibly be.
Thanks, Dave. I, that is helpful. And I, I think that, you know, the more I think about it, at the end of the day, the point of this really is how much impact is this, uh, development going to have on the city in the, in the most immediate area? And so, you know, perhaps really focusing a little bit more clearly on trip generation and actually thinking about some more fixed numbers even more than percentages. Because again, the, you know, percentage of what, um, just kind of, kind of throws more questions than answers. So, um, some, something for the team to look at, I guess. Um, looking at perhaps setting some, actually just fixed number threshold that we, we expect to have less than X number of car trips, um, you know, based on each of the, the development blocks that are considered. Um, I had a couple of other questions. So one was, um, I guess in line with some of the comments about feeling like there's not much of kind of an accountability framework. I was looking at the, the, under the site wide global section, for example. And the description of that category says the following items are committed to be provided within the site. And then one of those things, I mean, some of them are sort of, you know, dedicated areas for indoor and outdoor bike parking. Well, that's just sort of a requirement of any, any new development. But then there's, it shows a goal of at least one Madison B Cycle station within the site. So, you know, not, not the two that are shown, but at least one. But then it says pending cost negotiations with B Station, a private for profit company. So the way I'm reading this is there's a commitment to look at it, but there's not. So this actually doesn't even require one bike share station to be built if the negotiations don't work out. Is that a correct read of the way it's written right now?
Can you hear me out? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, that is, and we recently, um, we have negotiated with B Station and, and had ongoing conversations. Uh, we just actually submitted a letter over to the city today and we got from them. Um, we see as, as a potential good fit in the future, as do they. Talking with them, you know, the, the phase we have in front of them, the, the scale and density of what we have and what, what's before people for approval, does not support that. They have indicated to us that they're focused on the East Wash corridor. They have limited stations that are funded, um, privately by, by groups. And then they offset that with advertising. Right now, we do not have a, a funding mechanism. And both us and B Cycle agree that, you know, with the limited scope for this project, it is not something either of us are going to commit to. Um, we would like to have that private entity group there. Their current position is it would, it would require a funding commitment that we have no source for with just the one apartment building. And we have shown, um, it was in the presentation I sent over, but it's also in, um, the letter for B Station that, you know, we, we have dedicated a spot, we designed that in our block six on the central green. We do have a bike repair station and we were working closely with them to make sure we would have the infrastructure there to include that and expand it as users come online. And, um, we can work something out with them. But, you know, back to that flexibility, you know, day one, we don't, we don't know the exact appropriate amount to have. If, if it is appropriate, if the demand is there that B Cycle would fund it themselves or they would have us be required to sponsor it. We would certainly talk with future office tenants and commercial tenants to see if, if that model works for any of them to sponsor and get their logos on bikes. So that, that's really a long way of saying, yes, you know, we, we'd like to see them there. It has to be economically feasible. They are a private company and we, we have actively engaged them in discussions. But our, you know, sitting here right now, we're not, we're not saying we are definitely putting in a bike station for.
So I, I appreciate all that, but there's, I think there's a big difference between committing to doing something right now and immediately and having some, um, some commitment at some point with some threshold. I mean, you, you could also say that once there's X amount of development, that there will be one installed. And, you know, quite frankly, that's the question of who's going to pay for it. I mean, it, it needs to be part of the development. I mean, B Cycle is not gonna, they're looking for people to, to pay for these stations. So I mean, if part, if this is part of a strategy to control the traffic demand, that's sort of the point of, of a plan is to say, we're going to do something. We're going to sponsor bus passes, we're going to, we're going to put some money into this thing to minimize the motor vehicle impact. And so to say, well, we're going to put in a B cycle, but actually we're not. We're going to talk about it and if somebody else pays for it, we'll, we'll have a spot where it can go. I mean, that just doesn't really feel like much of a commitment. And I, you know, just the way that the whole document is written, it, you know, perhaps it wasn't done intentionally, but to have a section to say you're committing to providing these things and then sort of have little caveats that don't really require a commitment, you know, that just doesn't, the whole thing adds up to, to not a lot, just not a lot, period. Uh, the, the TDM coordinator, I got the same, I had the same question that Eric already raised. You know, the way that it's written in here, it almost reads as if it's a, it's a role. Um, but it's really, yeah, it's just an add-on responsibility, right? And, and I get the point that sure, in the beginning, having a one FTE, uh, position to do this, you know, probably doesn't make sense. But on the flip side, I don't see any actual requirement here other than designation of a role, um, that, you know, somebody could say, yep, I'm, that's my job. And they put, you know, one hour a month or a quarter into it and satisfy the requirements. So, you know, I, I think overall my feedback is it, it doesn't, you know, worst case scenario, if someone's not interested in doing this, it looks like there's really no, there, there's no teeth to any of it. I don't see any accountability. And even the, the sort of bringing it up for review seems to be wholly within the realm of the, the, um, association in the future that they can, if they want to change it, they can bring it to staff to try and get approval. But I don't see any mechanism for staff to say, hey, this isn't working. We're seeing a whole bunch of cars and we're going to require some updates here. So I just, I guess I'm really struggling, um, with seeing how, like, it seems like this could basically be adopted and almost nothing could happen and there's nothing we can do about it. Um, I, I guess one other follow up question is the, what, what, there's no minimum for the TDM fees either? That's just, you're, so you're saying that there will be an association, there will be fees, but there's no, we're not tying to there to be any minimum level of funding or did I miss that?
No, there's, there's no definite dollar amount set because, you know, again, I'm trying to make the point that we do not know. that we do not know what this project is going to evolve into. We are trying to get out of the gates and to get something going. The first thing up for approval is an apartment building. And we understand, I understand all the points you just made that, yes, you know, there is, the hard metrics and the hard enforcement is not there. But we believe that is similar to any other project. We believe what we've presented and worked in good faith with the city on for a couple of years now is the most comprehensive and developed plan. We do have an association that has actually has a coordinator role identified, not knowing the full scope of what what that will evolve into over time, just by the nature of how this needs to build out. We also understand that City of Madison does not have that set policy that you do not have other other projects you can point to and say, okay, Cosmopolitan didn't meet their metrics. So, you know, here's the things that were there. We could, their occupancy permit, we can find them, we could do X, Y, and Z. So so we are trying to work in good faith with the city to to actually move forward. And we have been careful to not create metrics that are not achievable or or assign costs that cannot, you know, be on the project that on the front end that that make it impossible to move forward. So I definitely understand your concerns, but we started this process from the standpoint of working collaboratively with the understanding that there is no, you know, TDMP policy that's been adopted and there are no specific metrics.
So I appreciate all that. Thank you. I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm going to because you said that a few times already. The the fee collection, so there's no minimum on that. But the, it also says that each block will be assessed annual fees, again, not not defined. And those will be used to maintain common development items, including bus shelters, potential B cycle stations, parking enforcement, stormwater, and private law enforcement for the development. Yes, explain how the TDM fees are going to be funding private law enforcement and what that has to do with.
Parking enforcement. No, it's not. It's not TDM fees. It's it's assessments to each individual block owner. The TDM portion of that is one portion of that, as are those other items. So there's an annual assessment in the private association that gets assessed to each block. And we don't, we don't have those budgets because we do not know what the scope of that is. And over time, that will become more expensive and and also more spread out by bigger users. So the the framework that that is created is an association created by declarations of covenants for the private property owners within Madison Yards. And TDM, you know, costs are listed as one of those eligible expenses, similar to other items like you mentioned.
Thank you. So I guess I'll just do one last comment and get that done with now. So I I appreciate the challenges. Yes, we don't have a more defined program broadly. I totally get the frustration from the development team of feeling like they're, you know, doing what they've been asked to do, working in good faith with staff. I understand the challenges for staff to do a sort of first one of these. But really, truly, I I think we need to do a little bit better than just saying, well, at least we are making them identify a coordinator and then a lot of things that they might want to do. If we don't have the, if we're not prepared right now to have more specific goals, then I think perhaps we should have some other trigger in here that says we will re review after a year. We will have some kind of, some kind of ability to put some additional definition in here that points down the road. Because to say that, well, we don't have all the specifics, we don't know exactly who's going to be where ergo, we can't really commit to anything specific, basically means we don't really have a plan. I mean, I I agree with Eric's summary that it's, yeah, it's it's sort of a collection of some ideas. And it's sort of written in a way that looks like there's a commitment to doing a lot of things. But I just, I don't see any actual commitment and any any way for the city to make sure that any of these things happen. So I guess that's my feedback on.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Are there any further questions for either staff or our speakers? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion? Eric, go ahead. You're muted, Eric.
Sorry, I was that guy, the unmute guy. I will try. And if somebody has a better idea on this, I would be happy to have amendments or or a substitute. But I would offer a motion that the the committee return the plan back to Plan Commission with the recommendation that the plan is not yet adequate and that it should do a few things. And those things would be on the goal, specify the number of cars that we're shooting for, what the, what the, what the ITE says and what the 30% level is in hard numbers per day or per week, whatever. So give us a a number and tell us how you're going to be counting them. So we don't rely on a condition that the applicant has to come back and work that out later. Those are pretty simple. And then secondly, the applicant should speak to how what the firm commitments are and think about some firmer commitments in in this. So we're not left to. And I don't have a, maybe others will have specifics, but you know, what it, what happens if we don't meet it and what are they going to actually for sure do? And those things should be tighter than they are now. So that's the motion. If I have a second, I'll speak a little bit more to it, although I think we've said a lot already.
Alder Furman, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
I'd like to second that and I'll make more comments when it's appropriate.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Eric Sunquist.
Yeah, most of it's been said, a lot of it by me, and I won't repeat it all. But there seems to be a view from the development team that this is a commitment that is going to be borne by future tenants. That's not really the case. This is a commitment that the development team has to own. And Alder Foster's questions, we're sort of getting at that. There's a gap here. It's like, yeah, we don't know specifically what residential tenant's going to be in in room 35 or what office tenant's going to be in suite 42. And yeah, that might change things, but we already know how many square feet of various uses are going to be. This, the, the, it is again, true, as the applicant has said, and we've, we've agreed that the policy here in the city is lacking. But it's been a condition of approval for a long time that you actually have to do something on this site and not just commit to thinking about it and planning it later and putting it on future tenants. This is a condition of approval of the SIP and it has to have more in it than just, we're going to have a coordinator and work it out with the tenants later with no, you know, really nothing to make them do it if they don't. So there are plenty of other cases around the country. If the applicant wants to give us a call, I'd be happy to share with them. The County of Arlington, Virginia has been doing runs with the land TDM for a long time. That the developer owns that. They then, you know, they make certain commitments and then whoever owns the building or rents it after that has to live up to it. So this is not, we're not making this up. We're not, it's not even bleeding edge. It's not barely leading edge. It is for Madison, but not for the country. So I think that's the big disconnect here. This is a commitment of the developer to make this happen. And you got to approach it that way and not just something that we're going to see how well we can work it out in the future. Thank you. That's my remarks.
Thank you, Eric. Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to chime in quickly and thank Eric, Chris, and Alder Foster for their their comments on this. I am disappointed in the level of detail and I'm thankful that we have some people here on this board that have been able to clearly articulate some some good details that we can be asking for. So I'm happy to have seconded it and just wanted to express my thanks for those members that were able to put that together. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Are there further, is there further discussion? Seeing none, please make sure you are unmutated. So those in favor of returning this item to the Plan Commission with the recommendation that the plan is not yet adequate. Specifically that the number of, I think, number of cars reduced is specified in hard numbers. How those are going to be counted and a firmer commitment or firmer commitments to some of the items that were discussed. Eric, does that kind of wrap up your motion?
Yes, thank you. Much more concise than I said it.
I was running as quickly as I could as you were speaking. So on the motion to return this to the Plan Commission with what I just said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Passes unanimously. Thank you to staff and all of our speakers. All right, we will then move on to Legisar 60375, accepting the report titled Comprehensive Plan 2020 Progress Update. And I think Brady or Brian Grady is going to be our presenter.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, here to present briefly, our first, first ever, first annual comprehensive plan progress update. I'm going to jump into a PowerPoint here. I want to hopefully, this will be showing up properly. To share my screen, do I need to do things special or can I just jump right to it?
Looks good.
Looks good.
Sounds good. And are folks seeing the entire PowerPoint or ready to go like full screen view?
I'm seeing the full PowerPoint.
Excellent, thank you. So yeah, so it's our, our first ever Comp Plan Progress Update. So we, this is actually, I think, predates when the TPPB was was created. The comp plan was adopted in the fall or August of 2018. Our first update in a number of years over all the complans. It's a long range document that looks out 20 years into the future. We have focused on the next 10 years in terms of our action steps because we'll be updating the comp plan every 10 years. So this is the document right here. We're updating a 2006 document, previous version of our comp plan. One thing we really worked on, worked towards in this process was to create a concise document that could really not only be a long term vision for the city, but could also be actionable and quite honestly, allow us to do more frequent progress updates to measure our progress in terms of implementing the plan. Wanted to note, and I'm sure many of the folks in the meeting here today were aware of it or involved with the the comp plan updates. But we did really make a concerted effort to reach out to many people across the city and more importantly, reach out to many people that are not typically involved in city processes or at least in planning processes. So in terms of our, some of our underrepresented communities, whether it be, you know, people of color or other segments of our population that are, again, are just not typically involved to the extent of other individuals in our community. So through the process, which was about an 18 month long engagement process, we interacted with about 15,000 people total as we were tracking both who we interacted with, demographics and other attributes of people that, again, we received feedback from. Many folks that received feedback from were asking for information about how, you know, how my feedback will be used, how I know it will be used. I can get the question through a lot of our processes. And so that kind of led to us in creating the documents, showing very clearly how feedback was was received and how that was impacting draft documents as the plan was being developed. And so now we're now almost two years after the plan was adopted. We're kind of completing the more long term feedback loop in terms of conveying how impact, how feedback was, has been used and how it's impacted decisions here at the city. Now that's step one of our feedback loop, we receive feedback from the community. Again, we try to show how the feedback was used as a plan was being drafted. Our second step here, we incorporated that feedback into the plan, certainly. And then now, as the plan has been adopted for almost two years, we have been able to take action to implement some of the plan's recommendation, tying it back to feedback that we received. And now we're on step four here, again, this long term feedback loop of reporting back in terms of what the city's been doing for the last two years, again, to advance those plan recommendations. Let's see. And so let me just jump to, so here's the cover of the documents, including the Legisar. Again, this will be our first, our first version. We hope to do this every year going forward. One of the first pages in the document has, provides some background. I'll just mention that, you know, kind of what the comp plan is, what it's intended to do. The plan is divided up into six, six different elements. That's how we categorize our recommendations. Also, an important note here that our plan, in myself and others in the planning division, working on the comp plan, really just many, one of many folks working on it in terms of the different departments across the city. This was an energy agency effort to create the comp plan. We want to make sure that all agencies are working towards this common goal. Obviously, the plan is being used now more internally to help guide the budget, help guide work plans. And even creating this progress update, we interacted and got information from about 37 staff members in about 18 different departments. Certainly many folks that you all interact with, except this department, this the board interacts with. I'll focus on, here I just have a few more slides on the land use and transportation element of those six elements in the plan. For each of the different elements, we have a one spotlight project, a kind of a cover page, if you, if you will. In this case, we spotlighted a lot of the progress that's been made in terms of bus rapid transit. There's been some progress. We hope that that progress continues, certainly. And then what we've done, again, for each of the six elements is highlighted about eight to 10 different items where we've seen clear progress over the course of the last, you know, year and a half in this case, since the plan was adopted. We've seen clear progress on plan recommendations. Overall, there's about, there's 50 strategies in the in the entire plan. There's about three actions, there's more specific steps for each of the strategies. There's about 172 actions in the plan. And these highlights kind of cover a different, different actions in the plan. So here, we've highlighted about, I think, about nine. The ones we're highlighting in this edition, again, we'll do this every year going forward. Some of the new metro service out to some prairies, our first highlight. The study of budgeting funds for the metros and network structure study upcoming. Talking about trying to identify that, create that satellite metro facility up at the former Oscar Meyer site. We highlight our fourth bullet point, I think an excellent one, where we, the city, I think mostly TE has made some improvements in how they score and evaluate projects for kind of the small scale PED and bike improvements. We're looking at, well, not only are they reaching out to the state's neighbor resource teams, but they're also looking at the demographics of different neighborhoods in terms of where projects are requested. So they can consider that in their waiting process. And so that's a great example of not only responding to feedback from the community for requests, but also looking at the equity side of of how we spend our money, make our investments. This is kind of a newer program or at least newer refinements for the the city's community engineering division within DOT. We talk about the movement of the intercity bus transit location, highlighting and kind of related to this map down here where we have great transit access, where we've adopted recent plans in the city here, neighborhood plans that can all create increased density near that transit. We do report out on the number of housing units that were created in 2019, or at least approved in 2018 and where they're located in terms of edge and infill. Our comp plan overall has a recommendation that we accommodate more than half of our new dwelling units in infill locations, mostly already developed locations. Our second to last bullet point talks about a couple of neighborhood development plans created on the edge of the city. Actually, we're updating the edge of the city that significantly updated the densities from those plans that were from the 1990s. So again, facilitate more compact development. And then lastly, we have the improvements that have been made in terms of the intelligent transportation systems, in terms of some of the ABL upgrades, at least that have been planned and that are planned for upcoming implementation in terms of the bus rapid transit system. And so again, we're trying to, of the LUNT, Land Strength Transportation, different actions, trying to pull out those kind of highlights in terms of major progress in the last year. And we'll try to do that again in one year from now, documenting progress over the past year. Then my last two slides here have the matrix. And so in, in the Comp Plan, we have a matrix of all of the different strategies and the actions. We note the, the lead agencies that we identified through the plan drafting process, what agencies would we lead for implementing the, the actions. And we provided a status for each of these. And so, or, kind of, there's two different tiers. For items that are kind of more policy things, where it's like, if, if confirmed with this, this, this decision, this is the policy that the city should, should use. Where it's more of a policy thing, it's more ongoing, we note those as ongoing. For items that are a little more discreet, like maybe it's more of a physical improvement that we're describing in the plan, to create this infrastructure of this location, we have the tiers of either not started, in progress, or complete. And so again, for things that have a kind of a discrete start and finish date, in, not started, in progress, or complete, ongoing, and retain some more things that are just kind of ongoing and what else they will be probably doing for many, many years going forward. And so in this, in this case, there's nine different strategies for LUNT. We have the different actions, and this is kind of finishes out that, that matrix that we use the different status. This, this document right here can be helpful, at least this part of the document can be helpful for state agency work plans to monitor kind of where we're at with different, with different items. And again, the whole point of this is to report back to the community in terms of how feedback was used and what the city is doing to address issues brought up through the Comp Plan. And I would say with that, I think we're just looking for some, some of this report. If folks have, have suggestions, we're certainly open to any feedback that folks might have. We're visiting with this report TPPB here today. We'll go to the Plan Commission next, and then we'll go to the Common Council.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for staff? Alder Foster, go ahead.
I guess it's probably half comments, which is a question and probably more maybe to Director Lynch. Well, I guess first to Kevin, thanks for, you know, doing this. I'm glad, I'm, I'm really supportive of, or Brian, sorry, really supportive of checking in on this. I think we, there's, you know, been a lot of criticism in the past for Madison of, you know, we are a place that makes really great plans and then doesn't do anything with them. So I appreciate that we are remembering that we made these plans and, and checking it out. So I think that's a really positive first step. I, my, I guess comment to Director Lynch is that I'm, I'm thinking this is probably something that we as a body may want to or need to dig into a little bit more in detail and to get some additional detail on a number of these items and also to really consider to what degree should these strategies or actions impact the, the, both DOT, engineering, and all the related agencies, you know, work plans as we're thinking ahead for 2021, thinking about budget, et cetera. So I'm wondering if maybe this is an opportunity, you know, we, we sort of got this highlight. Perhaps we need to consider having this on a future agenda and dig in a little bit more. So, you know, for example, I, I look at the list and I see strategy A is, you know, improving the city's pet and bike networks. And the action A is proactively fill gaps in the pedestrian bicycle network. So this says that engineering is, is lead agency and status is ongoing. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, perhaps should have pushed when we created this action to be a little bit more specific and have something a little bit more measurable there. But even on that one, you know, it's not, I, I wouldn't know how to, as a member of this board, I wouldn't know how to clearly state, yep, this is the work that we're doing towards that end. I know we've talked about the low-stress bike network, for example, and identifying the gaps and closing them. You know, that seems like maybe a specific way to, to get at this. But just, I guess I worry a little bit that, you know, we, we get this update, it says ongoing, so then we put it away and we move on. And is it really, are we using this opportunity to reflect and to, you know, have it, have it be kind of focus on our work? All that being said, also recognizing the, you know, the work plan that, that we're going to go over today, how large that is, how many items already, you know, the prioritization issue, the capacity issues. And so I don't mean to imply that we just magically have to come up with capacity to, you know, come up with meaningful answers to all of these things. But it, it feels like it might be, I think, you know, one of our responsibilities as a, as a transportation policy board, to really make sure that we're all either working actively on these things or are actively deciding that, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to take this one up right now for reasons X, Y, and Z. So I don't know if you had any reaction to that, Tom?
Yeah, actually, I will be talking about our work plan. And I actually feel like our work plan reflects the priorities that are in the Imagine Madison Comp Plan pretty well. I think our work plan is more specific than the Comp Plan in many ways. There are a couple of items within our work plan that are not in the Imagine Madison, but I feel like they have become emerging priorities. An example is Vision Zero, right? That's not specifically stated in the Comp Plan. And yet we, we feel like that's a very important part. And then also too, I, I feel like, I'll give an update on Complete Streets. You had mentioned the pet bike network and identifying gaps in sidewalks. I feel like that's an important infrastructure metric, perhaps, but the Complete Streets, Complete Green Streets that we'll talk about in, you know, maybe about 10 minutes kind of provides the structural framework for where we should focus the priorities and street typology hierarchy. The Imagine Madison Comp Plan did not go into that kind of detail on some of those items, but I feel like I think almost every, every item within this work plan, which, when I look at it, being honest, I'm exhausted just looking at it. But I feel like they are consistent with Imagine Madison. I feel like we are making a considerable project towards meeting those objectives. And I actually, I appreciate Brian and the Plan Staff actually doing these updates, right? Because goals are really important as if you review them, right? And I, I actually feel like our previous Comp Plan, I don't want to be critical, but I, I'm not sure if it was really used as a reference as the city determined its priorities and work plan. And we are, in fact, even when we give our capital budget, we have to state what Comp Plan element we are addressing with the capital budget request. And so it should be on our minds.
That's, that's great to hear, Tom. It sounds like you're, you've already sort of done that analysis, at least individually or as a, as a team. And maybe, maybe the end of my question then is just simply calling that out even, even more explicitly, going, say, here's our work plan, and specifically, here's where it ties to what we've been asked to do in the Comp Plan. So.
I could actually put a, a strategy and an item underneath every, like almost every box, or many boxes, you know.
I think it's really helpful. And, you know, just like you do work with the budget requests, I think it is a good, it's sort of a, a way to, to keep ourselves honest and, and realize that, yeah, we are working towards the goals that we set out for ourselves. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Alder Foster. Baltasar, go ahead.
I'd say thank you. Thanks, Brian, for, for this report. I was wondering where that document was. So thank you for, for bringing this to light. I, I know the city put a lot of resources and, and I do know of, you know, like, sometimes we talk about doing community outreach. I can, I am a witness of, you know, this plan really went into the community and really did the best you guys could to bring input from the community. So I just want to second what Alder Foster said about using this, you know, for once, we have something that the community is letting us know what their needs are. So how can we combine and complement with some of these concepts, you know, transportation concepts that we have? So, you know, I just say, you know, thank, thank you for bringing this up. I, we do have a copy of that in the office at the Latino Academy and, and we were once, I was wondering what's happening with that. So, you know, I'm glad that we are reviewing that. I will, you know, even, even, I don't know if it's possible for us as a group to, especially with the transportation area, to use it as a guide of what our community mentions some of the needs are. You know, I mean, it's like, sometimes we go and ask them the same questions. We have this, you know, they already told us what they needed. You know, so, and we are invested funding into, in asking them those questions. So anyway, thank you. And I'm all in favor of using that document as much as possible, especially because it came from many, many meetings with the community. And, and that, you know, I, I know that you guys went into the African-American community, Latinx community, and, and that was good. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Baltasar. Further questions from staff? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept? If there is, just go ahead and unmute yourself.
I would move acceptance of the report.
Move by Alder Foster, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Alder Kimball, by just a half a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of accepting the report titled Comprehensive Plan 2020 Progress Update, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Hearing none, I believe that's unanimous acceptance. So we will move on to Legisar 60908, DOT Work Plan Status Update from Tom.
Yes, am I able to share a screen?
It appears so.
Okay. So I, I briefly typed up a couple of sentences regarding most boxes on our work plan. I think what I will do is I'll do a summary of the first priority in the COVID. And then I will answer any questions that people might have for the second priority or third priority. So I'll go from left to right because I read left to right. The Oscar Mayer, we are continuing to move forward in negotiations with Reich Raven. It has gone slower than we had anticipated or would like. Reich Raven has committed to closing all Open BERTs requests, which is kind of open concern, you know, environmental concerns requests with the DNR. However, there are additional investigations that we would like to do that they say they are precluded from doing due to their previous contract. We are enlisting, we would like to enlist the service as a very highly regarded environmental attorney. And I believe his contract is being introduced at tomorrow's council meeting. So that we can appropriately address the risk of unknowns. It's likely that the use of escrow accounts, perhaps insurance clauses. The city regularly buys properties with environmental concerns. And, and this site will have the environmental concerns with or without metro's use. We just want to be really responsible stewards. And then when we get to a letter of intent, which is much like a purchase agreement, that will go through the full process through our, our committees and council. The metro route study, we released that RFP probably in February. We had five submittals. I think two were higher than the others. And the selective consultant is clearly really was the highest among all of them. It was Jared Walker and Associates. He's internationally known, very well regarded. He writes the blog, humantransit.org. He's very good at communicating transit principles to groups. And so we, we anticipate, you know, it'll probably take, you know, six weeks to eight weeks to get the contract approved and everything like that. But we anticipate that his involvement and interaction with the TPP, as well as his staffs, will be pretty significant. The TPP probably be the lead committee for that study. Bus Rapid Transit, we have enlisted, we've actually contracted with a consultant. We are intending to submit on a project for small starts this, this fall in September. The, I want to put it, we are, there is a resolution being introduced at tomorrow's council meeting that moves about $3 million from the 2021 BRT budget to the 2020 BRT budget. Because FTA wants to see full funding of project development before they allow us into project development. So it's kind of a technicality. We will not, we are not able to spend that money in 2020, but we need to have it available. And and thank you for the elders that helped sponsor that. I can answer questions if you have them. There, Justin Sternberg is our new Metro GM. He comes from Indianapolis. He would like some portions of the locally preferred alternative reassessed or maybe revised. And so we are interacting with him on that and seeing what we can do. Logistically, we probably, to submit literally in about eight weeks, we have to submit with the with the locally prefer alternative that was adopted in April. However, we can reevaluate aspects of it this fall after we've submitted. And so we're investigating what that looks like. Vision Zero is actually a new initiative that is not in Imagine Madison Comp Plan. However, I feel like it's, it represents a value that's highly supported by the city. A resolution for that is being introduced into council tomorrow. It will be referred to the July 6 TPP meeting as well as TC meeting and probably will be adopted in mid-July. We are making a capital request so that we have an ongoing funding mechanism. Additionally, not only is Vision Zero being adopted as our, you know, official Madison policy, but through many of the elders, including Alder Foster, I think, started it, is there were several Vision Zero advanced projects that were identified. And there's a resolution accepting those as well being introduced into them. Most of those projects have to do with speed reduction because speed reduction is probably the most significant thing you can do to reduce injuries or save lives. And so that's actually, that's a very positive thing. That's a very positive thing that I think Transportation Department knew of Vision Zero for the past several years. They really didn't move in that direction, and now we're moving in that direction. I, I just feel very good about that. Complete Streets. There was some money left over from Madison Emotion, coupled with some others monies where we had $160,000 to put out an RFP for, basically to establish a modal hierarchy and a street typology. And then in the discussion of the RFP and in various discussions before the, the board, it became evident that tree canopy and distributed green infrastructure needed to be included as well. Because we're all, you know, basically we have, let's say, 66 feet from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. And we, we want, and we want part of that for cars, part of that for bikes, part of that for pedestrians, part of that for tree canopy, part of that for, you know, stormwater measures, distributed green, and they're all competing for, for space. And it's very difficult to make decisions. What takes the priority? And so we put out an RFP and we basically said, what can you do for this amount? And then if you had more money, what could you do? And we selected the consultant tool. A tool is very highly regarded pedestrian bicycle consultant national, probably the highest, largest in the, in the United States. largest in the United States. And they're partnered with, I believe Equity by Design and Strand Associates. And for the, for the amount that we have approved in the budget, they are able to do the modal hierarchy and street typology, which is a heavy lift. In the added scope, or they called it the expanded scope, they were willing to talk about the distributed green infrastructure and tree canopy. And so we are requesting that the monies for the expanded scope be included in the capital budget and we'll see how that goes. The update of on-street meters. Right now I just think of saying, poor Sabrina. What happened, had happened about a month ago, our mobile payment vendor went bankrupt. And so all of our, we're no longer able to use mobile payments for all of our street meters. And so Sabrina has been working with an alternate vendor, which I believe is also the vendor that's used on UW's campus. And they are doing some prototype testing on how their product works with our existing system. And if their product works well with our existing system, then Sabrina will go ahead and fulfill the replacement of the multi-space meters. And then there's the opening of the JDS parking, which is actually going to be called the Wilson Street Parking. And I don't know if you've been by that, but it's actually, it's an attractive building. You know, I bike by it every day and I think it's a nice building. That will be opening, I believe it's June 22nd. Yeah, June 22nd. So in many ways, literally for probably 20 years, the city of Madison has not done any, opened any new parking garages. And then in the span of 18 months, we've opened two new parking garages. So that's actually, we don't feel the effects of that, but getting the systems up and going, staffing them, all that, that's Sabrina and her staff, and I just feel like she's done a real good job. You know, for something that, you know, it was just a pretty routine job for 20 years. And now all of a sudden there are these new dynamics that are pretty challenging and she's handling them very well. So everything on the first priority list is still moving forward despite the fact that we have COVID-19 and how the COVID-19 really just turned the apple cart upside down. We reduced our metro routing to core routes only, which required different picks, different protocols for safety. Now we have to kind of take a look at what does recovery look at like? And that will be going before the June 24th Transportation Commission. Lane captures, there's been an effort since we have reduced vehicle miles traveled. Would now be a good time to capture lanes that we intend to at some point in the future. But now is just an easier time to do it than other times. We've identified quite a few areas. Johnson Street, East Washington, Odana Road and Seago. Unfortunately, really, some of this requires a public process and we just don't have the, we just really don't have the manpower or literally the capital money for the paint to do them. So right now we are focusing on just capturing the lane on Johnson Street and a small portion of lane on East Washington. And then we'll move the, perhaps the road diet on Odana Road to next year. Shared streets. We adopted several shared streets. They seem to be popular. We have an expanded list where we could implement more shared streets. Madison Police Department and Madison Fire Department have expressed reservations about expanding that we are working to address some of their concerns. However, probably at this point, a lot of our equipment that we use or barricades, drums and the like, for shared streets are being used for deployment of activities, protest activities. So probably the immediate expansion of shared streets has probably been delayed. I think we will be getting back with MPD and Madison Fire Department probably within a week or two about some additional candidates. And perhaps it could be implemented late July, perhaps. Outdoor dining and streeteries. You know, all of these things, it's just, I want to say this, but all of these have been like fires, you know, they have been things that like, deal with this and deal with this right now because we need to deal with it right now. And so it's very, the fact that we've been able to move forward on the first priority list while simultaneously addressing the COVID-19 items, I think has, has been good. I don't, it just. So the outdoor dining and streeteries is a concept that allows restaurants to use parking and street space for dining so that they can maintain physical separation. It was promulgated as an emergency order right before the emergency orders expanded. I believe that it will be voted on by council tomorrow. And I believe that there might be an alternate resolution being proposed as well that expands and modifies that ordinance. But that's developing the guidelines for that, which basically meant researching what does NACTO and other, what are other cities doing? We developed that. The parking mobile payment, we've already discussed regarding that. And then the suspension or resumption of parking fees. We suspended off-street or on-street parking fees and resumed them June 1st. The off-street fees have been reduced to help support businesses for with a $5 cap. This was done after a little bit of analysis from Sabrina. This program will be brought forward to the Transportation Commission for voting, but also probably some affirmation. Sabrina has some more strategic plans on the June 24th meeting. Two other items I'm going to put in the second priority and then I think I will not discuss the others unless there's a specific question. The Wilson Street Corridor Study is moving forward. There have been considerable number of one-on-one meetings with the apartments, with the state of Wisconsin, Sheriff's Department, different entities. There will be a virtual public meeting. Where is that? At the end of, end of June, June 29th. And if things go well, they actually believe that perhaps they might be able to have a revised report and recommendation for a July meeting. Maybe not July 6th, but maybe, maybe a little bit later. And then MOPEs. If you remember, we we had intended to develop a parking policy. And that seemed to, that was based on a resolution that was introduced by Liddell Zellers. We realized that we could not address parking policy unless we address transportation demand management. Then there was kind of a pause, a one-year pause because of some efforts from Bloomberg Harvard that were, I'm going to just say more high level. Right now we are off of the pause and we have enlisted a Harvard intern and we're having weekly meetings. Eric's involved with them. To look at transfer-oriented design overlay as well as TDM policies. The intent with being is that we would like to have, I'm going to call it a deliverable, a policy of one type or the other to present to the boards late summer or in September. We intend to have a presentation at the July 6th meeting of the TPPB. So I think we all, I think the discussion over Madison Yards just reinforces how providing more guidance to developers would help everyone involved in the process. And so we would, I think our intent is we would like to do that. So with that, you know, I could talk about every single one of these boxes, but I, I won't. And I am open to questions or comments.
All right, questions for Tom? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, I'll be brief with mine. One, you might want to just consider adding TDM into that MOPEs square, just to make that clear that that's where that's falling. Two, the sip artization process on the bottom there. Yeah, obviously with COVID, et cetera, and the impact that's had on budget process. I think this was one we had really, we had some big hopes for, I guess, just on that front. Did capital budgets have already been submitted, is that right?
We submitted our budgets on Friday.
Okay, and so is it fair that to say then maybe for this year in terms of what engineering has submitted related to road projects that is, you know, similar to how it's been done in the past? And that we didn't take any steps in kind of a reprioritization based on safety projects or pet bike access projects as opposed to road condition and utility condition?
I think that there has not been a revamp of the whole process. However, I will say we altered. I need to, I don't know what will come out September 3rd, right? But in our submittal, we altered our BRT submittal considerably in an effort to make our application more competitive. And then also Traffic Engineering submitted a amount for Vision Zero, the yearly amount for Vision Zero that targets improvements. Actually, it targets low-cost improvements on high injury roadways. So the idea that we don't want to spend, if we're spending $3 million at an intersection to address a safety problem, we might want to look at, are there cheaper ways to do it? And so now as far as the, the program that Chris Pedakowski and Rob put together, no, I believe he provided a a summary of this SIP projects. Was it at the last Transportation Commission?
Yeah.
But there hasn't been a new process for prioritizing those.
Okay, I guess two things on that one. One, you know, maybe, I think we've got a lot coming up at our next meeting. But either that one or the following, I think having a conversation about budget, transportation-related budget stuff would be, I know we wanted to do that earlier, obviously, but the COVID, et cetera. So I think that we can get a, get a conversation around that would be helpful. And perhaps we do at least just bring in the tip as sort of informational in that discussion so that we know even just in terms of scale, how much money we're spending for road reconstruction projects. And I guess also I would, I know there's, you know, only so many boxes fit on each row, but this is one that I'd like to see get moved up as soon as we can. I would hate to miss out on this opportunity to really take a look at that program. You know, certainly for, for the 2022 budget, if nothing else. So just, I know it's one that you see a lot of value in as well, but I just want to make sure we don't.
It is, it's kind of a hard thing and I, this is going to sound like I'm dodging something. But I think Minneapolis has an excellent, is an excellent examples where they kind of created a policy that reflects how projects should be rated. And it's a good process, but it took them about two years. And so when we look at our process, you know, Vision Zero will have to have an implementation plan. The Complete Streets will have a plan and then the Route Restructure has a plan. There's just a, you know, there's kind of a, and then probably the MOPEs, if we, if we go where we want to go with MOPEs, right? And actually develop a TDM plan or ordinance that works, helps developers, you know, and accomplishes the goals. I'm just, I'm just telling you, there's, there's challenge, there will be challenges to get them more.
No, totally. And, you know, I shouldn't go without saying, but I think we should feel comfortable stealing from other cities as much as we can. So if somebody spent two years developing it, if we can, you know, adopt something very similar in a shorter amount of time, that'd be great. And also, you know, perhaps it's not even just a standalone project. I mean, when I think about really both Vision Zero and Complete Streets, you know, we're going to get recommendations out of there. And the idea that we're going to just come up with extra funding for different initiatives, you know, that's going to always be a hard sell. So perhaps this question needs, you know, power allocating our capital funding related to transportation. I think that it'd be wise of us to consider that within the Vision Zero framework. So perhaps it's something we could at least start a conversation with as part of that, part of that work. And again, maybe perhaps as part of Complete Streets. So something to just keep in mind. One, I just wanted to put a quick plug. I know Milwaukee Street Corridor Study was on, one version of these, looks like it's fallen off completely. Maybe that's page two in the fourth priority. But I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that one because it was one of the adopted recommendations when we got the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. Make sure that that one doesn't disappear completely. And then two last points. One is you mentioned perhaps needing some extra capital funding for the Complete Streets to incorporate the kind of green streets element. And this might already be on the radar, but I think we should definitely take a look at perhaps getting some of that funding for the greens infrastructure elements from the stormwater utility and/or perhaps the forestry special charge since it seems like the, that extra work is really specific to managing stormwater in our, in our public right-of-way. So it'd be good to just get a little review there and that, I mean, it might help us just keep that in a little bit separate bucket. And then the last thing I would say is the, you mentioned earlier that Vision Zero isn't in the, kind of called out specifically in Imagine Madison and that's true. But it does seem like it's pretty applicable to Strategy 8, which calls for expanding and improving the city's pet bike networks to enable safe and convenient active transportation. So I think maybe that's the, the connection point as we think about how these align with the, with the Complan. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any further questions for Tom? Seeing none, thanks, Tom. We will move on then to our next item, Legisstar 60909, Using Metro to Transport National Guard. This item was placed on here in response to a qualitative feedback that various Alders received. So I think Tommy and I spoke about this briefly. If you could just give a very, very brief, maybe review of how that's possible, I think Metro is allowed to be used in tons of emergency. You just kind of give us that, that real quick and then we can, yeah, discussion.
So just getting stuff, so. I get my papers. So Metro buses, actually I'm going to read a response that Justin gave to Alder Rummel. And I suspect that many, this might have been copied to many people. Metro supported a request from the Emergency Management Director to help transport Wisconsin National Guard members as backups for, as needed. Metro complied with the request for a couple of days for the Emergency Management Plan. Under Madison's General Ordinance 3.20, you know, brand four. Basically, the, the Emergency Management Director is able to direct city agencies to assist in, in various things as they occur. And this was something that occurred on the weekend, a direct request. I think I was out of town, it went to our dispatcher and they provided it. The buses were used to transport personnel between command posts. They were not used to transport or house arrested individuals. The buses were not part of and were not affecting the regularly operated service. And the Metro service hadn't been affected by it. I think it amounted to perhaps three days. There was some damage to Metro buses. There were two windshields that I understand that were broken. So this is, according to the ordinance, Metro does do these things. They do them in other ways too, that are perhaps less controversial. You know, for instance, when there was a, remember when the, the Transformers blew last summer? And there was, you know, Metro provided cooling buses. Metro provided rest buses for when the Sun Prairie explosion occurred. There are other areas where Metro has done this, just consistent with the general ordinance. And so now I just let it be for discussion.
Thank you, Tom. So I guess the intent of, of discussion, it can be what the board wants it to be. If there's, the board can decide whether it wants to do something, whether it wants to talk about it, maybe make some recommendations. So I'll just open up the floor for folks, please use the hand raised feature if you'd like to speak.
Do you, do you want registrants first?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask for that. Yes, let's do registrants for public comment.
The first registrant to speak is Adam Page and Cop. And the next up would be Connie Benow.
All right. Adam, can you hear us?
Just a second here.
Just telling me I have to up, upgrade him to panelist in order to let him speak.
Hey, he has an old, a very old version of Zoom.
If I upgrade him to panelist, can I then turn back to attendee?
Yeah, correct, I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Adam, can you hear us?
Hear me?
Yes.
Oh, can you see me?
We should, no, I shouldn't be able to see you, I don't think. Anyway, so you have three, you have three minutes, you may go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, um, yes, I just like to kind of make a comment on this, on this item and just say that in my opinion, this use of Metro buses is inappropriate. It doesn't serve the mission of Metro and I think it, in a lot of ways, it runs counter to Metro's mission to serve its riders. At least one bus window, and it sounds like Tom's confirmed, at least two bus windows were shattered during the confrontations between police and protesters. And also that Metro's reputation is damaged by its association with state sanctioned violence against protesters. Yeah, so, yeah, so addition to that, kind of looking around the country, multiple transit agencies, drivers and their unions, and governing bodies of transit agencies have taken stances against the use of, of city buses for, in support of police actions and escalation tactics. So just some examples I can, I have here are transportation agencies in San Francisco, Boston and Seattle have already committed to end the practice administratively. And then drivers and their unions in Minneapolis, New York and Chicago have also stood up in solidarity with their protesters. So kind of going forward, what I would hope to see potentially would be for maybe some, some of you people here in the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and the Common Council would be able to write some kind of legislation to end this practice in the future, right, by city ordinance. And also for administration to commit to the end of the use of this practice. So yeah, that's, that's my comment for now. And I'm available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Adam. Are there any questions for our speaker? All right, seeing, oh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, Adam, I guess my, it's kind of an open question, but you mentioned that one of the kind of, one of the issues or the biggest issue is for the impact, for the potential impact on kind of Metro's reputation or the, you know, association with policing and, and public transit. I guess I'm, well, I should assume, are you a, a regular Metro rider? And if so, I guess either way, what is, what is that association for you? And why, kind of why do you object to, to having that association?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Adam.
Great, yeah, sorry, I used to Zoom very much, got that old version and everything. So yeah, yeah, I mean, for me, I am a regular rider, I'm more of a seasonal rider, usually ride my bike during the summer and then in the winter I ride, I ride the bus. But I'd say that for me, I just see that, yeah, I just don't, don't really see a good synergy between Metro and transporting people that are carrying tear gas and pepper spray and people that are marching in falences against crowds of demonstrators.
Thank you. And do we have any further registrants for comment on this item?
Yes, next up is Connie Benow and after that Mia Robidoux.
Okay, I'm wondering, let's see.
We do not have a Connie, there's no, no person by that name.
Okay, then we'll move on to Mia.
Hi, my name is Mia Robidou and I have been a rider on Madison Metro Transit since I was like nine or 10 with my family. I took it to school growing up. And then when I returned to Madison about four years ago, I took it every day to work up until the pandemic, which has me now working from home. But I certainly plan on continuing to use Metro Transit moving forward. And I'm here as one of the people who was involved in a phone and email campaign to like bring attention to the fact that Madison Metro providing itself as a transportation, literal transportation for riot police to harm black youth and medics and other protesters for those nights that the police did escalate and commit that violence and harm against people is really troubling on like a fundamental level that I think it's beyond just like a damaging of the reputation. It, to me, something like when I get back on the bus, thinking about that question of like, was this the seat that transported somebody who then hurt people right outside my window? I should note that I live a block away from the Capitol, I live a block away from State Street. And so on those nights, I was either doing runs myself to get water out to people or medical equipment out to people while trying to practice social distancing as much as possible. And I was certainly, even when I was home, still hearing the pop of tear gas and people screaming and crying and seeing children who are going by who are part of these demonstrations because this is about their life. And so I'm really here to like express that while I understand that this was carrying out an ordinance, as Adam mentioned, there are always opportunities that are going to present itself in which we can decide, you know what? This may be the ordinance, but we're going to resist it in that moment. And I think that Metro Transit really missed that opportunity to take a stand. And I would like to see Metro Transit take a stand now in terms of making commitments to clarifying that ordinance and stripping out the use of, of transit as a means to get police officers and the National Guard to interrupt with protests. On that note, looking at that language, I think one thing that I've noted is that a lot of the language around the ordinance 320 and the connected ordinance 319 on the state of emergency, there are a lot of definitions for what qualifies as an emergency. And I think some of them were mentions, like when there's flooding, do we use buses for that? If there's a major heat wave, if our, our power is down, how do we provide cooling stations? There's a lot of language around those definitions of an emergency. But when it comes to the actual reference to, to section 319, that emergency is not defined very clearly within 320. And the definition of that emergency that this fell under within 319 was that riot or commotion? And again, not very clearly defined what that riot or commotion is. If every time windows were smashed and vandalism was considered a riot or commotion, then we'd need the National Guard out every time we have the, like a, you know, big football game or whatever. So not very clear. And I think that, that's where some of that opportunity is to make sure that buses aren't used to silence protesters who are justifiably angry about the murder of black people and the continued injustices against black people. I can yield any questions.
Thank you, Mia. Other questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you again, Mia. Anne, are there any more registrants for public comment? I don't see the other person here on the list, so.
There, there's nobody else registered to speak, but there are four other people registered in opposition.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the floor is open for discussion. I'm sorry.
Um, can you maybe just read the names and?
Yes, that'd be appropriate.
Carol Herman, Elizabeth Jessie, Sasha Lastin and Yasmin Shimmel Agoo.
Thank you, Anne. Alder Kemble, actually it looks like Chris, you had your hand up first, so go ahead, Chris. Chris, I think you might.
Gotcha, double muted, thanks. So I'll just keep my comments pretty short. I, I mean, generally, I, I think that the, the use of buses in cases of emergency, they're an asset the city has, is, is a good practice. I think a lot of the comments we've heard do raise some important questions about, A, are, was this a case where we actually had buses pulling into a, a crowd? Possibly at a location where there's a bus stop and then suddenly a bunch of, you know, heavily armed, geared police or whoever jumping off of the bus. I think there, it's definitely worth considering whether that is, you know, Scar's images, Metro's image, and could be traumatic for people. And then secondly, especially in those cases, who is driving the buses in those instances? So do we have Metro drivers potentially driving into situations like this? If you can, Tom, maybe explain a little bit what the, more about the circumstances?
So, yeah, I'll explain a little bit more about the circumstances. I actually did not find out about this until a couple of days later. You know, typically the Emergency Response Director, who actually often rotates, you know, made a call to the on-call person within the tree network for this weekend. Has been explained to me that they were not used to deliver troops right in the midst, that more to transfer people from station to station. And I do believe that they collected them at the post on Wright Street. I, I do not know too much more than that. I don't think it was a prolonged series of instances, but it, it was a couple of days. And so that's, that's what I can tell you.
Chris, does that satisfy your question? Do you have anything further?
Yeah, I assume, I know I assume it was bus drivers driving.
Yeah, the bus drivers get to do their picks. And so they were, they were volunteers that did this, volunteered for the shift or the pick. They were not required to do this. However, I think if I was a bus driver and, you know, my windshield was damaged, that would be concerning to me.
All right, Chris, did you have anything further? Okay, thank you. Alder Kemble, you're up next.
Well, this isn't the first time that we've dealt with the relationship of law enforcement and Metro. A number of years ago, there was a request from the Dane County Sheriff to use our buses as basically rolling surveillance for them to do traffic stops and speed, speed stops and, you know, enforcement, traffic enforcement. And at that time, the Transit and Parking Commission had a robust discussion about it and came down firmly on the side of, we should not use Metro, but Metro buses should not be used to assist law enforcement or for any, you know, enforcement activities at all. The discussion at that time had to do with, well, and in particular, this proposal was to use them going down Verona Road in a part of town that transit dependent people have to use the bus and they have bad service. And, you know, Metro already didn't have the greatest reputation in that neighborhood. But I don't know if Margaret was on TPC at the time, probably Alder Foster was checking in with TPC at the time. I'm sure she'll recall that discussion. And we had a different general manager at the time. I don't know, I don't, I think this was before your day, Tom Lynch.
Was Chuck the manager at that time?
Chuck was the manager. So anyway, we had a very, a, a good discussion about it and came down really firmly about, no, Metro should not be associated with law enforcement activities because of, you know, I mean, not just the brand, but because of the rider, the ridership, caring for the ridership. And and, you know, that was a, we didn't codify that into any ordinance or resolution, but that was a firm understanding that the general manager at the time understood. We did not, you know, get into that partnership. And so this was kind of, you know, coming from that history, it was kind of shocking to see Metro once again actually just doing it. You know, and putting their drivers at risk and, you know, among a whole, a whole lot of other things. So I think this is something we should, we as a board need to discuss and come up with some, I mean, if not come up with clear ordinance language, at least, you know, guidelines or a resolution around this issue. Because it, it is one we, we had consensus on in the past.
I would encourage it be codified because these types of decisions will be made by someone who's, not me, they'll be made by someone who's at, at the Metro office at 11:00 PM some night, right?
Yeah.
And and then also, I, I don't want to, I think you know, people's values are different. And so I don't think you want someone necessarily to make a value judgment on some, if an ordinance should be followed or not followed, you know. on if an ordinance should be followed or not followed, you know. Now, one might argue in this case maybe, but I think the clearer that it is in the ordinance, the more helpful it will be for employees and staff and also for the emergency response director. If it's, if they know that they, that is not a resource that it's at their disposal.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alder Kemble. Alder Furman, you're up next.
Thank you. I think we're, I have some comments, but I think we're still questioned. So I have a question for Tom, and then I'll come back and make comments later on when we move on to the comment portion. Tom, was the buses windshield, that you talked about buses being damaged, were they damaged during transporting of these National Guard? Or were they damaged because of being in the area when, when things started to get bad?
That's actually a good question. I don't know.
Thank you.
Baltasar, you're up next.
So I think I'm going to go back to the, when we have comments, most of mine are comments. So I'll just come back when comments are available.
Okay, thank you. Margaret, go ahead.
Yes, this is actually a real question. It's been raised before, but I don't know what the current practices, or I'd like to get that established. When Metro buses are used in service of, whether it's the fire department or the police or any other city agency to provide assistance in emergencies, is Metro reimbursed for the hourly cost of those, of the utilization of those buses?
I'll give you my impression, okay? I'll say generally not, but maybe a difference would be, for instance, right now, we are transporting people who are experiencing homelessness between the Beacon and the Warner Park Center. So we are being reimbursed for that. That was an emergency action. Like, for instance, I think when we helped Sun Prairie, that was more, you know, their downtown got blown up and so we, you know, rather than me do a conjecture, why don't I get back with you? I think it's more appropriate that I get back with you and ask.
Okay, I'll ask a follow-up then that perhaps you can get back to us on. I know that in previous years, while I believe Metro was not reimbursed for the cost of the utilization of its fleet and drivers, at the same time, we were paying additional fees to Madison Police to provide patrol service and surveillance service at our transfer points. And so I would like to know if that is in the current budget and if it's in the proposed, will it be in the proposed 2021 budget? As I recall, it was a fairly substantial interdepartmental transfer at least two years ago. I don't know what it was, what it is currently.
I wrote that down. I think you're, you're referring to the patrol that exists at the South Transfer Point.
Actually, at one point, it was, it was not limited to the South Transfer Point, although I think that's where the bulk of the hours were. There was also work being done at the East Transfer Point and the North Transfer Point.
Okay, Margaret, did you have anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alder Foster, you're next.
Thanks. I expect, Tom, this is probably another just question for your list that you won't be able to answer yourself, probably.
I'm writing them down.
So I figured, probably for the city attorney's office. But just in terms of if we did, you know, through a following discussion, if there was interest in pursuing some, you know, formal statement that would prevent this from happening in the future, if the recommendation is to update ordinance language or if it's the emergency management plan itself or if it's some kind of Metro guideline or something in the Metro ordinance. So just, I guess, some input from the city attorney's office of where the most appropriate place would be to codify something like that.
I'll, I can ask. The types of employee that serve as the participation in the EOC, you know, typically is an implementer and might not be fully informed of all the ordinances, you know, both in, you know, that go to Metro as well as the emergency. Perhaps it would be imperative to know for the emergency coordinator, management coordinator, the chief of the EOC, to understand what he has as resources and what he doesn't. So I'll ask John Strange, what would be the best way for him to know that? Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, discussion, I know several of you had comments, so please re-raise your hands. Alder Furman, may I go ahead?
Thank you. I think this is obviously something that if we're going to pursue more, we certainly need to, at some point, get into a lot more details. I'm more concerned when it comes to what the actual response was on the ground than whether or not it was Metro that was transporting the National Guard. It sounds like they weren't transporting police or people that were arrested. They were transporting National Guard that we, we as a city asked to come here. And frankly, it was my understanding that we, we don't, we're not even reimbursing, we're not being asked to reimburse the state for that. So if we asked the National Guard to come in and then said to them, hey, you know, figure out your transportation on your own and pay for it on your own. I think those are difficult places to go that we're certainly going to have to figure out. We use the National Guard for other stuff. I mean, I don't know if buses were used, but National Guard was here in large numbers when we were experiencing flooding in August 2018. Their work was very much appreciated. I don't know how they were transported. So, you know, I would suggest if we're going to go down this route, I'm very much against what Alder Kemble had talked about, what the sheriff had asked us to do. I think that that'd be a terrible use of Metro. But I think this is an interesting place to be because, you know, what if, you know, are there, are there good protests versus bad protests that we would be okay with the use of Metro? I'm obviously much more concerned about what the actual reaction was of our, of, you know, police department as well as the National Guard, once they were on the ground, opposed to, you know, how they got there. And it sounds like, you know, at times that, that, that response was not good. And I think there are other places for us to be taking that up, but I think we just need to be very cautious if we're going to prevent the use of Metro. What are, what are all the different side effects of that? Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Margaret, you're up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment first on, you know, pickup and drop-off locations. I do understand as well, though I didn't witness it, that, but somebody on one of our other commissions saw National Guard loading in at least one day from Wright Street, as Tom said. And I saw live Facebook feed of buses being loaded on West Gilman, right off State Street, at 11:30 or midnight one night. I believe the police were using the Lutheran church there as a command post. I was shocked to see buses being used that way. And I appreciate Tom's offer to, you know, get the facts on the actual budget transfers over the past couple of years. But, you know, I have to comment that, I think, I think we're going to find that we haven't been reimbursed by the police or fire department. And, you know, we can discuss, we can discuss that and whether that's a good policy. But in the context of then charging to transport homeless people to one of our community centers, they get charged, the police don't. That, to me, seems like such a case of trans-budget, budget transfer from certain agencies, but not others that don't necessarily reflect our values and/or the values that we need to be reevaluating right now.
Mia, I'll just clarify on that, those experience. The reason why I believe those charges that are occurring is because they, they're eligible for CARES Act funding. So the CARES Act provides a reimbursement opportunity for that. And surprisingly, the, the, it's been an ongoing cost. It's actually quite a substantial cost that is for federal funding. And so that's why we are charging for that.
Well, that's why I would like to know what the cost has been for providing the support services for other agencies, how substantial that has been, what kind of budget transfer that has represented. And, you know, CARES Act may cover it. I don't know if that money could, that CARES Act money could also be used for other purposes as well. Is it a general principle that we're transferring funds from agencies like Metro or community development, essentially to the police? That's problematic to me. And with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Margaret. Baltasar, you're next.
Thank you. You know, this is, this is a very difficult thing. We've been, you know, we've been trying to figure out how to do outreach to the community, how to make Metro a symbol of a part of the community. And, you know, I understand, you know, all the logistics and everything. I get, I get concerned when we, you know, I know Metro has been used, you know, to transport air conditioners or, you know, the Sun Prairie Fire, but here we're talking about something, something bigger, obviously. I think, you know, we, we had an opportunity to stand with the community. I think, you know, all the times I hear concepts about community equity, I hear concepts, you know, and I'm not saying that this board doesn't follow that. I think, I think we do. But I think as a city, and, you know, I'm still trying to figure out what's my, what's our place here? You know, in this, you know, in this, in this group, in this meeting, what can we do to make some changes that will actually impact and support our community? And, you know, I mean, I am all in favor for us to try to, to change some of the things that we have. I don't understand all the different, different levels. But, you know, if we can change some of the ordinance, some of the language, I think, I think we need to, you know, there were some, you know, we followed that, but I, I think it's very appropriate to do a community apology. You know, I think, you know, and I understand, you know, that, you know, some folks were in charge, some other folks were not. I think we can be with our community, the community that we serve, you know, folks of color and folks of colors who are very hard to reach when it comes to increasing ridership. So, you know, this, this is an opportunity for us to, to do something new. You know, and I trust that this is, you know, this is a great board and, you know, I trust the leadership of Tom and his team. This is an opportunity for us to, 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 to change that and to create something new. So thank you.
Thank you, Baltasar. Alder Foster, you're next.
Thanks, and thanks for all the comments already. Yeah, to me, this is really about Metro, Metro's reputation and how Metro is understood and perceived by the community. I think particularly, you know, what we've seen with COVID, obviously, we're already dealing with a pretty dramatic shift in that, where people are now looking at buses and maybe not a safe place, right? Maybe this is a place where I'm going to catch COVID. And to further associate this with what I think a lot of people in the community have seen, which was that intervention that happened did not feel like promotion of, of public safety, you know, but rather the opposite. And so I think that is a really significant harm. And in a time when we're really, we've got some big conversations to have about Metro and what is Metro, you know, public transit across the nation and the world, but what, you know, what is this going to be in our community? It just feels like it's, maybe it's a small thing, but it's certainly going in the opposite direction from my perspective. So I do think it's something that we need to look at. I think to Alder Furman's point, I think that was a good one. And I, you know, I certainly, I don't think that we need to cast too wide of a brush and say, you know, National Guard should never be on the buses. I don't think, you know, my concerns about, you know, public perception, et cetera. If we're hauling National Guard folks down to help sandbagging on a flooding event, then Metro's going to look like it's helping out and part of that community effort. So I don't see any issue there. I think what I, what I'm really talking about is specifically not using Metro for law enforcement, which is what this was, specifically not, not just, you know, National Guard transportation. So that's where my interest is. I think the questions that Margaret has brought up around contracting and the financial components of it, it is actually important. And, you know, Metro is not just a department of the city. And so while that ordinance says that we're going to use all of our resources, it's a little bit of a reach. I mean, clearly, there's a very tight relationship there, but Metro is its own entity. And so, I mean, there are questions about, should Madison be able to just do this and use this? But, you know, I think, I think it's important to keep that separation, you know, as a separate financial entity. And I guess to Baltasar's point, you know, I agree. And I think perhaps the best way to sort of do an apology, or at least part of that, is considering a change in our policy, right? I think that's what better way to actually acknowledge, you know what? We wish this hadn't have happened this way and we're going to actually commit to not using our Metro service for this purpose in the future. That, that seems to be maybe the best thing that we could do as a policy board is to recommend that. So I'm certainly in favor of continuing to look at this and asking for some support from our legal team to draft, you know, what this would look like. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Badri, you're next.
Thank you, guys. Everybody made really good points. It summarizes, especially like Alder Furman said, asking, we asked National Guard to come and we can say, hey, find your own transport kind of thing, right? So that's a really awesome point. I didn't see that side of it. What I, one thing I thought is very common sense in a way is that whenever, and I'd seen in other countries too, where whenever you see there is a public concern, safety as a concern, the first thing they stop is the public transportation because that's where people can get hurt, as we've seen. The windshield's getting burst, right? So when there is a curfew in place, I would say that's a public emergency, like a safety issue. You don't run kind of like public transport in that time. It's not only the drivers and also the passengers are at risk at that time, right? So I was just thinking, you know, it's, it's probably legal, everybody's going to look into it, but I'm just thinking that's one of the changes needs to come in, like, when there's places like curfews kind of thing going on, it's not a good place to run Metro. That's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Badri. Alder Furman, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to make one other point. If we are going to pursue this, I think, you know, understanding what the definition of law enforcement would be important. You know, I think about that, the safer-at-home, you know, protests that we had. And again, I don't want to call. Um, and again, I don't want to call what happened, uh, you know, there are all sorts of questions on what happened, you know, especially that Saturday night, or even the incidents, whether or not they're directly tied to the protests. But let's say that, that, that large safer at home protest got incredibly violent. Um, and, you know, a lot of those people brought weapons on the grounds of the Capitol. Um, you know, again, what's a good protest, a bad protest? Are we going to, you know, just put down a rule and say, you know, that that would be considered law enforcement if we transported the National Guard into that, um, you know, extremely dangerous situation and we're not using the buses? Um, I, I think we need to be very, very clear about the different scenarios and, and make sure that we're, we're comfortable with what we're setting ourselves up with. Um, and again, I will, you know, state what I said before, I think we, you know, I think the bigger issue, um, as a city, which, uh, obviously there are other committees, not this committee necessarily looking at it, is what exactly is the engagement policy and, and how do we deal with, uh, public safety?
Uh, thank you, Alder Furman. Um, looks like Margaret, you're up next.
Yes, uh, sorry to backtrack for a moment, but another question rather than a comment, question for Tom, uh, which you probably won't be able to answer right away, but put it on the list, uh, which is Metro is a utility that's paid for not just by the city of Madison, but also by our neighboring cities like Fitchburg. So what is the policy there? Uh, if there is, uh, whether it's a disaster or, uh, a police action of some type, do we also provide these services to the city of Middleton's fire department, police department? And again, how does that impact the cost share agreements, uh, for?
That's an interesting question. For instance, uh, when we did provide some buses for that Sun Prairie explosion, uh, now Sun Prairie is a partner, but then I don't think they were, you know, I think we were just trying to be a good neighbor there. So, um, I'll, I'll look into that.
Yes. Okay. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Um, Alder Foster, go ahead. Looks like you're muted.
I am, yep.
It happens so easily.
Yeah, so I guess I'll just maybe, um, make a motion that we, uh, would ask, um, Dr. Lynch to, um, come back with questions or answers to, to our questions and also, um, to work with the city attorney's office, um, on a potential draft, um, language and whether that's ordinance or wherever, you know, whatever the recommendations from the city attorney's office, um, that would prohibit the use of, uh, Metro for, uh, law enforcement activities. And, uh, we can get that brought to a future meeting for review and discussion.
Second.
So motion by Alder Foster, second by Alder Kimball, discussion. Lowering your hand from before, Alder Foster, so checking again for discussion. So all those in favor of that motion, say, make sure you're unmuted, please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is unanimous. All right. Next item, uh, Legis Ar seven zero nine, I'm sorry, Legis Ar six zero nine one zero, um, Traffic Calming Subcommittee update. The only update that I have is that there, um, we have not yet met. Um, we are, and, you know, Tom, maybe go elaborate, we are considered, I think, a tier two or a level two committee, the Traffic Calming Subcommittee is, which gives us, I think, low or no, or very low priority for, for IT support. Um, I, my understanding is that the, uh, training that other staff would need in order to support a meeting has been, uh, completed. Um, but maybe, Tom, you could?
Well, I, I actually, I don't think it's been completed. Um, so, um, first, I'm just going to, uh, I want to compliment our IT department, what they had to do in the last two months, it's just amazing, we basically all, um, but they've, uh, they and the mayor's office have divided committees into two types. One is tier one, which are ones that are videocast. We are, the TPBB is a tier one and the, um, TC is a tier one. Uh, they've identified the tier two and they said that IT staff cannot provide support for tier two, but they will provide training to agency staff, uh, to do a tier two meeting. And so we got that email last week. And so, uh, we have a couple of staff candidates. Uh, it's, it's kind of, uh, complicated because if, if, if the subcommittee gets a lot of public comment, then it just, it's a little bit more complicated for, like Anne Schrader right now is, um, is doing this, but we also have the tech facilitator, Jesse. So basically, one person will have to do two jobs for the subcommittee. And so we need just training on how to do that.
Okay, so that's, that is the, the why.
And we just got the, the notification and the request last week, so.
So my, my intent is to, to try to hold our inaugural meeting as soon as possible. I, I think it's something that, um, there's a lot of support for. Um, but it looks like Alder Foster, go ahead, looks like you would like to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so it sounds like, uh, any, any final training that resolved soon? Um, I guess that still leaves us, um, you know, so we, we had, we did have a meeting scheduled that we canceled, um, right, right as COVID was, um, starting up. So I wondered, um, Tom, if staff could help, um, do, uh, get some availability checks started with members of the subcommittee so we can begin to identify a potential date for that first meeting, um, and do that in parallel while the sort of training is getting done. I expect we're not going to find something within, you know, a week to three weeks that everybody can, can meet. Maybe if we could start moving on that as well, so that as soon as the training is done and we find a, a date, we could get started with that work. I think it's really important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, further questions, comments, discussion on this item? Um, so I'll, I'll follow up with Tom to, um, and perhaps Anne to, um, make sure that we start to, to do that. Seeing no comments, questions, or discussion, we will then move on to, um, Legis Ar six zero nine one one, uh, future meeting schedule and agenda items. Um, we do have a meeting, uh, scheduled for July 6th that is on. Um, we had one penciled in for July 15th. If you look at Legis Ar, it's showing as canceled. Um, my recommendation is that we not cancel that meeting, that we are un-cancel it rather, or reinstated. Um, reasons why, there are a few large items that, uh, were being considered for today's meeting that were pushed to July, um, because of timing with staff resources and, and where studies and where ordinances or proposed ordinances are. Those large items include Vision Zero, Wilson Street, allocation of responsibilities between, uh, Transportation Policy and Planning Board, Transportation Commission, and, um, Board of Public Works, uh, complete streets, MOBS, um, metro route restructure. And then, um, you know, possibly in July or even August, um, talking about, uh, budgets, which is something that just came up today. So these are heavy lift items, and if we, you know, try to take even two or three in one meeting, it's going to be a substantial meeting. Um, and then, of course, we need to leave room for referrals and other incidentals. So I would like us to have two meetings in July. Um, I leave it to the board, uh, whether or not we want to keep that second meeting. Um, the other thing I'll mention, um, is that I did have a meeting with, uh, our Justin, Justin Stoyenberg, the Metro General Manager, um, after our most recent meeting. And, um, some of the, the two big things that we kind of, um, uh, ended up kind of zoning in on that, that he would like us to start to think about or tackle are, um, particularly when we talk about COVID recovery, but also with the metro route restructure, is prioritizing ridership versus coverage. Um, this is significant conversation that should probably take place around that. And then also, um, transfer points, um, whether they should be kept, removed, moved to different locations, um, about that. So there are a number of, of heavy lifts and I think we should have another, or both meetings in July. Um, but again, I leave it to the board. So if anyone would like to chime in, uh, please feel free to raise your hand. Hi, Tom.
Yeah, I'll say that we, we won't have our, as far as complete streets and, um, the route restructure, we won't have our, uh, contract signed then. So those might actually be, uh, August, September things, depending on, on the contract approval. Um, and then, um, we can request that in some ways, I think the tier one committees, who meets and what day they meet, it ends up being kind of a capacity issue with IT. I guess they have a couple of teams and, um, so we can request a meeting. I'm, that, um, I don't, I'm not sure there's a guarantee that the IT team can, um, there's capacity for all the tier one committees to meet twice a month.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I'm, uh, very much in support of getting back onto our, uh, two months or two meetings per month schedule. Um, we had some, you know, very good discussion about that before we made the decision to go that route. And soon after making that decision, we lost, you know, four, five, or six meetings over the last several months for, you know, for very good reason. But we're, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling very much behind, as I said, the, the budget. I meant, I was personally hoping to have multiple conversations at TPBB about, uh, this year's budget. And so that, that alone is, um, is a really significant issue, I think, for us to, to deal with and to weigh in on. Um, so, so I'm very supportive there in terms of, you know, what, what, what we can or can't do. Obviously there are some IT constraints, um, related to the number of meetings that can happen at the same time that are IT supported. I guess my, uh, my ask would be that, um, you check, uh, Tom, with IT, if there's any issues with that specific night that we had a planned meeting. Um, and if there are issues that can't get resolved, then perhaps we just need to look at an alternate, um, second meeting time. But, uh, to me, the idea of just saying, oh, well, there, there may be constraints, so we're going to cancel it. Um, you know, I don't know. Technically, I mean, in case everyone's not aware, technically, right, oh, uh, we are still prohibited from meeting without express permission from, uh, the mayor and the council president, uh, but there is an ordinance change that is on the council's agenda for tomorrow, uh, that would change that. So depending on the outcome of that, uh, item, that may not be the case anymore. Um, and so I think, just like it had been in the past, it's really up to this body to decide when it wants to meet. And certainly we need support, uh, to be able to do that. Um, but I, I think the ask needs to be to find that support and not, uh, not just accept that we need to stop, um, meeting as frequently as we think we need to. So that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, Robert, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Alder Foster that we should try to meet again, and, and I would recommend targeting 15th of July until we have a confirmed reason why we can't do that date. Um, I do have a question. As a tier one committee, do we have to meet under the tier one conditions, which is all of this? Or could we have like a second meeting of the month, for instance, that is run under a little bit more of like just the, the, the Zoom portion and maybe, you know, less of the, um, IT staff being required to be present? I don't know the answer, but I thought I'd ask. And maybe nobody knows the answer and, but, okay, looks like Alder Foster.
Go ahead, Alder Foster, if you want to respond.
Yeah, and I think the primary constraints with a tier one are, are the IT support staff, so our wonderful facilitator, Jesse here, in our case, um, as well as, uh, probably even the more significant constraint is a limitation of, I think, only two, uh, meetings can be kind of broadcast at the same time. Um, so that, that I think is really the primary constraint in terms of scheduling. Uh, but no, I don't think there's any requirement that we must be broadcast, so we certainly have the ability to meet as TPBB, um, if we're not able to get, uh, to find the time where we're able to have that, um, kind of level of support. Um, I think to, to Tom's earlier point, um, we would just may have to make sure that the staff that's supporting us can, can, um, make it function as a tier two meeting. In other words, being able to kind of do the setup on their own without IT support. But I don't, I don't believe there's any reason why, um, we couldn't go that route if that were the only option for us.
Uh, Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, I also support having more meetings, um, if possible, uh, mainly because, uh, or maybe not mainly, but partly because it becomes hard to, some of these, uh, big picture items that we involve a lot of discussion and thinking, it becomes hard to tackle more than one or two in a night. Uh, so if, if that's not an option, then maybe there's an alternative where we can, um, introduce items at one meeting and sort of limit discussion and, and we all have time to maybe digest and formulate comments for a, a later meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Alder Foster, I still have your hand up. Was that in, good? Okay. Um, Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I agree that we should try to get two meetings in a month tonight. I sort of liked the Chris idea, maybe we should look at a little bit more about the idea of introducing something and then maybe withholding comment to the following meeting, um, so people can formulate their, their, their questions and their ideas a little bit more. I think that's worth exploring. The only thing I would also just say about tier one versus tier two is I think we need to be incredibly important, incredibly intentional and think hard about what kind of engagement we want from the public if we're switching to different tiers. Um, so if we have one meeting that is, you know, a certain tier and then another meeting that's not, uh, these meetings are a different level of accessibility for people. Obviously for some people, it works great, um, because, you know, uh, the dream of, which I'm so glad we're, we're here, of people to be able to participate from their home is here. On the other hand, um, you know, if a computer's not available, device is not available, um, the meeting isn't recorded, um, or it's harder to get to. Um, uh, you know, at least in the, in the past, people were able to go downtown and actually come to the meeting. And I know there are pros and cons to that as well, but, um, there are certainly accessibility issues related to doing the different tiers. And I think we just need to think hard about that if we decide, you know, certain meetings are, are a certain level and others aren't.
Thank you, Alder Furman. And that, you know, may come down to breaking up our agenda items into things where, you know, we expect public comment and then things maybe where we don't, like, um, I think like DOT work plan, for example, would be a good one for a tier two discussion. Um, uh, so Robert, you have your hand up?
Uh, just to clarify, I, I don't disagree with anything that Alder Furman just said. Um, if we can keep it tier one, I think that gives the most access to the most people. I'm just, I, I'm fearful that what I'm hearing is that if we require ourselves to only have televised meetings, we will have fewer meetings. And I think that would be a shame, uh, because I don't think we can accomplish what we want to accomplish with only meeting once a month or less sometimes. So I think, I, I was just asking the question about tier two to have an option if no other options exist. So thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Are there further comments, questions, discussion? Right, seeing none, so I, um, I'll work with the staff to, to, to see if we can hold our July 15th meeting and if not, to try to reschedule it, um, for another time in July. Um, other than that, that's all I have for that item. So move on to the last item, uh, Legis Ar six zero nine one two, general announcement from the chair. Um, I have none. It's more or less a placeholder. Um, and that's all we have for the evening.
Move adjournment?
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Mission carries. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Bye, thank you.
Thanks to our staff members and IT.